Are we ready? Are we recording? All right. We will call the City of Desert Hot Springs, regular meeting of the City Council, and the City Council serving as the successor agency to the reformer redevelopment agency board for Tuesday, December 1st, 2020. This is our 6:00 PM regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Betts.
Present.
Councilmember Gardner.
Present.
Councilmember Pye.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Griffith.
Present.
Mayor Mattis.
Present.
Our invocation tonight will be by Pastor Johnson, and I see he's on our Zoom call there. We'll unmute him, and the invocation will be given by him and our pledge of allegiance by Ms. Pye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dear heavenly Father, we want to just start with saying thank you. Thank you for blessing us, oh Lord, during the year of 2020, during this year of the COVID-19. God, you have blessed us even though we've lost many, but you still are the shining light in our lives. Thank you, Lord, for our first responders. Thank you, Lord, for those that are taking care of those that are in the hospitals. Thank you, Lord, for the loved ones that have to take care of loved ones because now they have lost their homes and lost their jobs. But through it all, Lord, we have learned to depend on you. So therefore, Lord, I am asking you to continue to bless our city council, our mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilwoman, and also, Lord, all of those that are in the city, officials that are helping keep our city afloat. Thank you for the volunteers, oh Lord, that are passing out food to our community members to let them know that they have a city that cares for them. So before we ask you anything, we just want to, first of all, just say thank you. Now, Lord, we're asking you to let thy divine presence be in this meeting on today. Give us your wisdom, your counsel, of what to do and what not to do. In your name, the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Our pledge of allegiance by Ms. Pye.
The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Next on our agenda is the City Attorney's Report on Closed Session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I have no reportable action.
Our next item is the approval of the agenda. We have had a request. There is two. I'm sorry. Let me get to the consent calendar. On the approval agenda, you'd be approving the agenda as whole, including the consent calendar unless any items want to be pulled. Is there any items to be pulled? The city attorney has asked that there be two corrections to item number 11, and she'd like to add those to item number 11, the consent calendar, and if agreeance, we'll approve it in whole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a quick note. We had a chance yesterday to actually talk to Calpers, and they had suggested on the interim city manager agreement to omit any car allowance, so we did that. And in addition to that, provide some further clarification that the city manager would not be able to work, obviously, more than the 960 hours. And it was a very minor, minor clarification because that term had already been in the agreement. But with that, those were the only two changes, and those came in yesterday, and I did correct those.
And we're assuming the city manager was okay with it because you're talking about it right now and stayed on the consent calendar. All right. With that said, if, again, there's no items to be pulled, we'll be approving the consent calendar, or the whole agenda in whole, including the consent calendar. Well, we are proving the agenda to, as listed, with a consent calendar being approved. I think I mixed that up 10 times, but is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Wait for the move and the second to go up on the screen. All right, please vote. All right, I just turned my screen off somehow when I was grabbing my pen.
Do you want to do a voice vote?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to do a voice vote?
Yes, I.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
And then I'll need someone to assist me in getting the screen back up. The pin was stuck under the unit here, and I think it turned the screen off. Remove the public comments. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items at this time? Presumed to the Brown Act, any persons may comment on matters of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of City Council not listed on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the City Council shall not take action on or discuss matters raised during public comment portion of the agenda that are not listed on the agenda. All comments are be directed to the City Council. Shall be devoid of any personal attacks. Members of the public are expected to maintain professional courteous decorum during public comments. Do we have any public comments?
We had one person register, Brad Anderson, but he is not online.
Okay. If he comes online, let us know. We'll put him on the public comments at the end of the agenda. No other public comments. We'll move to city manager's report. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'd like to have Jeffrey Buckheim, our Finance Director, start off with a report on our current financial situation.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is our financial highlights. As of November 30th, 2020, this is about 42% of the fiscal year has elapsed. So based on that, revenues we've received have been over $4.8 million, which is 21% of the budget for this fiscal year. At this time last year, the revenues received were at 19% of the budget. Expenditures are at $9.6 million, which is at 41% of the fiscal year budget. And at this time last year, expenditures were at 35% of the budget. For our major revenue sources, we did not have any changes in property taxes. However, our transient occupancy tax, as of 11/30, we received $544,000, which is 20% of the budget, as opposed to the same time last year at $469,000. Cities received $677,000 in dispensary taxes, which is 40% of the budget. And last year, at this time, the city received $485,000. I haven't been any changes in sales tax or franchise fees. And building permits, the city has received $307,000, which is at 38%. Last year, at this time, the city received over $479,000, which was at 48%. Planning fees for this fiscal year, the city's received $148,000, which is 37%. Last year, at this time, the city received $164,000, which is at 38%. The city's received $170,000 in engineering fees, which is 49% of the budget. Last year, at this time, the city received $168,000, which was 42% of the budget. There has been no change in the parcel tax since our last, since the last council meeting, but in utility users' tax, the city has received over $789,000, which is 38% of the budget. And last year, at this time, the city had received $689,000, which is 35% of the budget. As for individual expenditure categories, not including transfers out, personnel services are at $5.9 million, which is 49% of the budget. Compared to last year, they were $5.3 million at 47% of the budget. Operating expenses are at $638,000, which is 20% of the budget. Last year, at this time, they were at $908,000, which is 25%. And contract services are over $2.1 million at 29% of the budget. Last year, at this time, they were at $1.8 million at 26% of the budget. Again, personnel services are still higher because we have higher general liability insurance, workers' comp insurance, as well as the per side fund payment over the previous years, as well as increased personnel costs that did not go into effect last year until mid-September. And our contract services are higher due to COVID-19-related expenses, which include, you know, extra cleaning services and the open code financial software. And that is my financial report for this meeting.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Also, as we normally do, the report that he provided tonight was sent out actually earlier today to all of you, so you got it out of the meeting. At this point, I'd like to ask our Public Works Director, Daniel Portes, to get up and provide us some updates as to our current projects.
Much. There you go. Thank you very much. Just a quick update from last city council meeting. The A3 Star Dream project is still doing final cleanup. We do have some final punch list items that they're working on, but they should wrap it up soon. The Ranch of the Laurel project, a majority of the re-landscaping is complete. The only item that's missing is the painting of the block wall. Certain areas have to be repainted. The, oh, there is one more, the new one, the library project. They had utility tie-ins along Palm Drive. They are now moving onsite and will return to repair the street in about two to three weeks, so it should be done by Christmas time. And talking about Christmas, we started installing and completed installing of the Christmas tree, and the Christmas banners are also going up this week and next week. Thank you.
Danny, could you stand up there for one more second? There has been a concern, and I want to make sure that we reiterate this on a regular basis, that when utilities come in and do crosscuts on our roadways after they've been completed, they leave temporary patches in the middle of the roadway. Danny, could you talk about the process that we not only go through, but to ensure that this is done properly once, before it's signed up by the city?
Yes. So when it's pre-planned or programmed, any type of project, we do go through a standard process of them submitting applications. They schedule it. We have pre-con meetings. We inspect it. They finalize it, and the project is done. When they don't have a plan, when it's an emergency, or it wasn't part of their scope, or there is some kind of line that bursts for the utility, any utility, they go out there and do it on the weekends, nighttimes, or even during the day. Either we'll get notified that same day, the next day, or on Monday when we return. Those repairs are done temporary until they return and fix those permanently with permanent patch. They send us the list. Our inspector reviews it, and then when they do return, we go and inspect the final patch. Different agencies work a little different. They do hire, usually hire one contractor to come back and do multiple at one time, so they do lag a little bit, but we do have a big list of all the ones that we do have. They'll come back and do all of them at once because it is cutting me a scale for them. Thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Appreciate it. Now, I'd like to ask our city clerk, Gerald Soriano, to give an update on the election.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So just a quick update regarding the canvas of the election results. The Riverside County Register of Voters is on track to certifying the election in time for the state deadline of December 11. With that being said, excuse me, with that being said, the city will call a special meeting for January 5, and at that meeting, the council will certify the election results at the local level, and then the oath of office will be administered to the newly elected and reelected. And then we'll have a brief reception to follow.
Thank you, Gerald. And, Mr. Mayor, that's all we have.
Thank you very much for your reports. I'll go to Mayor and Councilmember comments. I will start with Robert Griffith.
I have no reports. I have done no meetings, so.
Awesome. I did mean awesome. I meant awesome. We get to move along very fast tonight. I didn't mean awesome. We didn't have any meetings. That came out wrong. I apologize. It's been a long day. We'll go to Ms. Pye.
Yes, it has. It's been a long day. On November 23, I attended an appointment-time meeting. It will begin in January, and it was about 100 people that attended. It was city leaders, law enforcement, county departments, and other leaders. Our law enforcement was on this meeting as well. The, this time, the point in time is going to be based on observation. There will not be interviews, and that's because of COVID-19. Today, I attended a meeting for Southern California Association of Governments. It was their economic summit. And not necessarily to go through everything, but there was information. There was a keynote speaker, and Honorable Karen Bass, U.S. President, President of California 37 District. She attended and hopes to see us in person next time. Also, there was roundtable discussions on transportation, affordable housing, access to good jobs. And basically, what I found out above all was that we're doing the right thing. And sometimes that's what you attend seminars for, is to find out whether or not you're doing the right thing. And from that, I don't have anything to add that we're not doing. I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna. To cut it short, there is something when Mr. Gardner does his report, he didn't want to do it, but he didn't want to brag on himself, and I'm asking him to brag on yourself. I don't want to give your positions the wrong names. I'm done.
Mr. Gardner. I, not one for that, but I appreciate that, Councilmember Pye, I really do. What she is referring to is that in the last month, I've been honored to be appointed to the Executive Committee representing the Western Coachella Valley Cities to the California League of Cities Executive Board. So that's that. And then last week, the Chair of the JPA Board for the Greater Palm Springs Convention Visitors Bureau, Linda Evans, who is the mayor of La Quinta, stepped down. The board elected Jeff Coors of Palm Springs as Chair and myself as Vice Chair, and I was informed, that is the first time somebody from Desert Hot Springs has served on the Executive Board for the JPA, for the Convention Visitors Bureau. So I'm excited about both of those positions, and I will have lots to report on, unlike some people who have no meetings and somehow lucked out. You want me to keep going with the rest of one other thing that I have?
No, no, I don't want you to. I'm joking. Yes, go right ahead.
One outside meeting report, and that is the JPA for the Convention Visitors Bureau. And obviously, COVID continues to severely impact our tourism economy in the valley. Room bookings and conventions are down over 50% from last year, so it's going to be another trying year with the tourism industry here in the desert. Assemblyman Chad Mays, who represents the southern port of the valley, reported on a recent trip to Hawaii and had the steps that they take to combat the pandemic. And we had a rather robust discussion of whether we could do that here or not, which involves things you can do in Hawaii that you can't do here because it's an island. When you fly into Hawaii, you have to show a test. When you get on the plane, if the test results aren't back, and you get to Hawaii and your test results haven't come back, they drive you to a hotel, and they put you in a room, and they take your key away until your test results come back in. So I don't think that would work rather well here, but we're doing the best that we can. It's clear that, I think, most of our tourism-related businesses are doing what they can to comply with mandates. The CVB is making a lot of TV spots and internet spots showing that to the drive market and to the local market, that you can come to the desert if you behave safely, and the hotels and businesses here are doing what they can to make sure that you have a safe visit. And one last quick announcement. This coming Saturday, December 5, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM, Desert AIDS Project Mobile Testing Van will be offering free HIV and free HEPC testing in the parking lot at Royal Emerald Pharmaceuticals. Test is quick, painless, and results are available in 20 minutes, and the first 20 people to get tested will get a $10 Starbucks gift card. That'll be this Saturday, the 5th, from 9 until 1. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Betts?
Thank you. We had an update on the COVID situation at the SEVAG Public Safety Committee. Everything pretty much as you're hearing in the news. Just share this little tidbit. I have family and friends in China, so I called there to see what was going on. I talked to a good friend of mine, Malu, and he says, well, it's a distant memory for them, which surprised the heck out of me. There's no restrictions, business as usual. He says, everything's normal here. They don't even have to wear masks. The only place you have to wear masks is on public transit. He said, if you get on a bus, you have to wear a mask, but that's the only restriction. And just shocked the heck out of me. I know they're really tough on the lockdown to begin with. He had said that he couldn't leave his apartment for 15 days, and then they finally came knocking on the door and said, well, you can go get food, one of you. Then they'd be tested, everything to get back in. So I don't know why the contrast there, but I just, anyhow, I'm just showing that here. There weren't any meetings with Thanksgiving and everything else going on. There's no meetings between now and the last. Did meet with the city manager on a few issues and continue to be impressed with how much they take to heart the residents' concerns and, you know, complaints. There was a stop sign that was blocked by vegetation, and I mentioned it to staff, and then the person called back and says, I can't believe it. It's taken care of already. So if you're out there, don't just gripe about this stuff. Give us a call, and it'll get taken care of. There's, I just want to remind everybody, there's, you take a look at the yard work you have to do at your house, and there's just one of us, the wife telling us to get it done. But there's, what, five or six employees for this entire city doing all this yard work involved in the entire city, so they're not going to get to everything all the time. But, you know, if you're out there and you see something, don't complain. Just pick up the phone and call, and we'll get to it. It's very, very responsive administration here. I'm just very, very pleased with what you guys are doing. Just when you thought SCAG Rena was done, turns out there's now an appeals process, and I think there's a schedule of eight or 10 hearing dates, and I got appointed as the primary. Rusty Bailey retired. I was his alternate, and I got appointed as the primary, which means it's so involved that there's actually a SCAG orientation for Rena appeals process where all the members are just going to go in for this orientation. So apparently, it's quite complicated, and I've been told it's going to be a lot of long hours. So I don't know what's involved with that one, but there we go. You know, I don't think, I'll touch a little quickly here on vacation rentals, and I don't know if it's something we need to bring this up as an agenda item. We don't seem to have a problem in our city except for a couple of locations. I don't think staff's getting after those. But you see, cities in the Coachella Valley are banning the vacation rentals. Palm Desert, Cathedral City, Ranch Mirage, and now La Quinta. And the profit motive is a pretty strong thing, so if people find out they can't do it one place, they're going to try and take their business somewhere else. And I was wondering if there's something that maybe we need to do to take a look and be proactive to say, well, before we get to have a problem here, maybe there's some things we could do. And I think there's some steps. If, you know, we look at what other cities have done, Big Bear requires the posting of a phone number so that if a neighbor goes out there and sees something, they don't have to call City Hall. They just call that phone number, and it's either a property management company or the owner of that place themselves. Signs that say the maximum occupancy and how many cars. Anyway, I'd like to take a look at that. Maybe I'll just bring this up with staff and the mayor, and then see if there's something we can bring to the council, see if there's something anybody's of a mind to do, but that's what was on my mind. And then the last thing is, you know, there's a couple of times in the past years brought up the conditions at this mobile home park, trailer park, I'll call it, on Fifth Street in Palm. And each time, it was a big declaration that it was fixed. You know, housing community development came down and said, oh, we've met, we've talked about it, it made the news, and it's fixed. Well, now recently, there's a fire up there. And every time there's something up there, it's been predicted ahead of time, and we really need to get that one resolved because it's, if even now you drive through, it's just deplorable living conditions, and we don't have direct control over that ourselves. But I think we can put some pressure on housing and community development to say, look, you're not doing your job. It's time to get down here and do it. And because there's no reason that should be like that. I guess we didn't lose anybody, but, you know, when you have one mobile home fully involved and the other one's nearby catching fire, and we know it's something that can get fixed and needs to get fixed, so I'd like to see us focus some attention on that and finally get that one taken care of. Just for those people who keep asking about speed limit signs and speed humps on your streets, keep bringing those up with staff. I told them I'd bring it up. I'm bringing it up again. I don't know what we have to do to get that budgeted, but it's something the council needs to authorize to try and get the speeding under control. It is way out of hand, and the fad seems to be not to stop at stop signs. I've seen that twice in the past week. People just blowing right on through them as if, well, I don't have to stop. And, you know, what's going to end up happening. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, and we're not going to start an agenda item here, but I know that's a concern of yours, the Fifth Street Park, and I know that Ms. Williams has an update on that because it was something we spoke about last week or after the fire on Saturday. Yes, if you could.
So staff and the mayor has met quite extensively with Assemblymember Eduardo Garcia's office over the last year to try to get our arms around the situation. We've also met with representatives of HCD and staff from Assemblymember Eduardo Garcia's office. At this point, HCD has condemned the park, and it is to be shut down due to COVID-19. There's been some delays in forcing that shutdown. We are following up with Eduardo Garcia's office so that we can do a full court press with HCD to try to get this issue resolved once and for all. But there has been definite work over the last year to really push HCD to come to a resolution. The property owner unfortunately has not complied. They have issued, like I said, the issue to condemn the park and shut it down, but have delayed in doing that due to COVID. So the next step is, again, that additional pressure. So we are working on that as we speak.
We let them know that we have masks for them if they're worried about COVID or whatever they need.
Absolutely.
So we'll get them whenever they need.
Absolutely.
And we'll get you more in depth. There's a bigger meeting happening soon, so we'll get you a better update, or a bigger update, not a better update. That was a good update. I did, unfortunately, not unfortunately, but fortunately, I did attend some meetings for the City of Desert Hot Springs during this time period. Riverside County Transportation Budget and Implementation Committee, which I sit on, did have a meeting, but there was nothing pertaining to Desert Hot Springs directly. The same day, Coachella Valley Association of Governments Transportation Meeting, which I represent the city on, did have a meeting, and there was a couple of items I'd like to speak about. First, we did approve the final design of Monroe and I-10 interchange. I know there are a few residents that travel all the way down to Indio, and that's a major thoroughfare into Indio, and I know we have some staff that live down there, and so that is in final design, and that will be going for funding. And hopefully, in the next few years, you'll see that under construction. Monroe is one of the last of the major interchanges along the I-10 corridor in Coachella Valley that need major upgrading. Changeable message signs, we've talked a lot about this over the past, along Palm Drive and Indian. Our staff came up with a great plan on where these changeable message signs should go. Unfortunately, SEVAG staff kind of overruled the cost, and, well, they didn't overrule the cost, but basically said that they can only afford one, which didn't make sense because we have two main thoroughfares into Palm Springs. And these message signs are basically just like something similar to what you see on the freeway where it messages well in advance so you can make alternative routes. This is something that has been on my plate for a long time. Mr. Gardner brought it up a couple of years ago and took it, took it for a ride, I should say, for a while, trying to get something moving, and we finally got SEVAG to agree that there's something that needs to be taken place. So the cities of Palm Springs and Desert Hot Springs worked with SEVAG, and they came up with some good ideas. The problem is, they only wanted to fund one. So we sent that back to the drawing board, and myself as the chair talked with the executive director, and they went back to the drawing board. They're going to come back hopefully in January with a better idea of how to at least fund two to start with, and then the city would have to figure out how we're going to fund the rest of them. We got a great plan to put them in and around the city to be able to funnel traffic into the right areas so that it doesn't become a burden when you're trying to cross these huge waterways and blow sandways, is that a word, blow sandways? Blow sand areas along Palm Drive and Indian Canyon, along with other areas of our community which get shut off by the major water, thoroughfares, not coming out right either, waterways through the city. So with that said, the next item on the agenda was the flood and blow sand report, which was very encouraging. This is, again, something that has been on my plate since early, I was elected in 2007. I know it was talked about well before me, and then I brought it back up. We were at the time working to make sure we get the interchanges done along I-10, the Indian Canyon and the Palm Drive interchanges. So it kind of took a back burner, but after that, we kept pushing, and finally, there was a report done, an engineering report, and they came up with some solutions. The current solution that's been on the plate for, been on the books for years is a $250 million bridge on Indian Canyon, and again, a $250 million bridge on Genoachtree Trail. Those are just the two main waterways that close off Palm Springs to any of the traffic from the north, mostly Desert Hot Springs and the High Desert. And our argument's always been that the trauma center, the only trauma center in the region, which actually is, represents all of the Coachella Valley, some of the Banning Pass area, and all of the lower High Desert, which is the Yucca Valley, 29 Palms area, has no access to the trauma center. And so with that said, they came up with these plans to look at where the water And so with that said, they came up with these plans to look at where the water flows, which is not along that whole stretch, it's actually along about an eighth of that stretch and to put in these man-made, precasted, I don't know the right word for it, Danny would know, he's in Public Works, I don't want to put him on the spot, but they're sort of like a, a bridge almost, but they're, they're not culverts, but they're similar to that. But they become almost, they bring the road up and so then you build it over that and it's actually pretty interesting. It went from about, if you took all the study areas, which is the Indian Canyon, Palm Drive, Genoachtree, two areas in Cathedral City and multiple areas in Desert Hot Springs, meaning the Dillon, Little Morongo, Indian Canyon where all the washes run through and where the hundred-year floods, 500-year floods can go through, you're looking at close to three, three quarters of a billion dollars to be spent if you were to build bridges all the way across those, if not more, depending on when you get to them. Today it's three quarters of a billion, tomorrow, tomorrow will be a billion dollars. This brought that amount down to about $35 million. So you can see a huge, which is actually obtainable in the future. They also talked about building maybe an emergency access road next to these, which could be utilized, sort of like a CV link kind of roadway where people could use it for jogging and other things and most of the time, but also it's suspended roadway, one, one lane that could be used for emergency traffic in the future. So a lot of great ideas. Again, this is a, going to design eventually and it could be put on the shelf, which is always what funding agencies in the federal government, state government want, is they want these shelf-ready projects. And this is something that's obtainable, especially with the fact that CVAG is our transportation agency, which pays three quarters of the cost of most of these projects, is now looking at a possible cash flow issue in the next 10 to 15 years, which could take the percentage that we have to pay as local agencies to 50% rather than 25%. That's one of the scenarios. So the sooner that we could build projects like these in areas, the better we'll get return on our investment, especially with the financial position, excuse me. So exciting news because hopefully if everything works out well, according to CVAG staff, if we work this out, we could see these projects funded and under construction sometime in the next three to five years, which would be huge, huge for our area. Moving along here, I took a tour of a cannabis facility today, Dr. Robert Farms in the Cochelon Project, very, very high-tech and very impressive project. I tried to take, I tried to take a tour of every project in our community so I could understand the difference between them and see what their, what their end goals are with staffing and where they're going with actually canopy growing or manufacturing to try to make the best decisions we can with what we'll see tonight with some of the items we have. So very interesting facility. Had multiple meetings with developers and constituents this week, the last couple of weeks. Wanted to announce, working with our staff, we've come up with, I know that we can't have a holiday parade. We can't have a holiday celebration, but we want to be some, do some sort of festive thing for our community and what we're actually asking everyone to do is listen to the governor, stay masked up, keep your, keep your, your events and gatherings light, but decorate your homes. And what we're going to do is we're going to have a holiday contest here in Desert Hot Springs. Me, myself and the city council will be judging your homes. There'll be four categories, there'll be the mayor's award, the most original, the most creative use of lights, and the best holiday spirit. Obviously, the mayor's award will come from me and the other three will have a tallying system from the council members will go out. I believe it's going on our social media and the website is already up or it's going up today.
It should be up today, yes.
Today, no later than tomorrow, you'll see it on the website. If you want to check social media, check the website out with all the rules and if you have any questions, don't hesitate to call City Hall and ask. But it starts today and ends on the 17th of December and we'll award the awardees on the 21st and put a little sign in your yard. And then once this COVID stuff's over, we'll bring you in and give you a presentation, nice plaque and trophy, right? Nice trophy. And so if you want to participate, again, the rules are up there and don't hesitate to ask any questions. I want to thank Roberto for helping me put it together and getting things done and we'll, we'll have a fun time, as much fun as we can have for the holiday season. I know it's tough for everybody, but we're trying to put some sort of holiday spirit out there.
Mr. Mayor, is there a prize or anything involved you thought of maybe?
So we have a, a trophy, right?
So the winners will have a yard sign so they can display and the community can see what prize they, you know, what award they got and then they will get a trophy at hopefully a council meeting that we could have people at.
Sometime, sometime at the first of the year, we'll get everybody in here, but you'll get that nice sign in front of your home saying, you won. All right, so don't forget to look at the rules and the regulations and all that. I did have a bi-weekly meeting with my faith-based organizations, my food, food programs, I say mine, I say, it should be ours, and our other groups. It's just, as you guys know, since COVID started, I put together this Zoom meeting. We've been having multiple partners come in, we've helped feed families, the normal amount of families at Food Now is 350 a week, it rose to over 500, it's fluctuated between 500 and 550. Thanksgiving holiday is always a time which they, they are in need. This year, Food Now is blessed with over 600 turkeys given to them by donation and 80 hams and 120 gift cards. They did a food drive, $8.50 would feed a whole family of four, all the sides for those meals. This Thanksgiving, they had, nobody turned away. They served, they gave 600 turkeys, 120 gift cards, 80 hams and all the sides to families in need and not one person was turned away this year. So I wanted to thank the community for all their support in that. And it turns us right into the holiday season for Christmas, Hanukkah, however you choose to celebrate. And they're trying to do the same thing again. They got a large donation from a, from a, a nice business here, Royal Emerald again, to make sure that they're going to produce hams and, and most of the food, but they're still asking for your contributions. $8.50 will again, put all the sides together and they're looking to raise about $15,000 to do that, to make sure that, they're assuming the numbers will be approximately the same, close to 700 people will need holiday meals and that's what they're looking to do. So again, if you, you can watch my social media, most of the council's social media, you can go to Food Now, you can go to the city, we'll make sure that that's blasted out on how you can help this year. But again, coming together, thank you to everybody for that, for doing that. And then COVID, it's here, it's staying, it's not going away. Please wear your mask and please support all those small businesses you can out there. These, we don't want to end up where the governor might take us and I've already talked to one small business today, said if they get shut down again for at least 30 days or more, they will most likely shut forever. And this is something that we can't have happen. Whether you agree or disagree with it, it's, wear the mask, whether you agree or disagree with the business not being able to be open completely, but at least halfway, support them where you can. It is so important this time of year. This is our last official meeting before the new year, so I want to wish you all Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year, please be safe out there. Unless a special item comes forth for the city council, emergency-wise, we will not be meeting again. As stated by our elections officials, the new city council will be sworn in on January 5th. All right. With that said, we're going to move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is item number four. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Desert Hot Springs amending certain sections of Chapter 17.180 allowing and setting parameters for marijuana entertainment facilities. And this is going to be our Assistant City Manager, Dory Welsch.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Over the past year, the city has been contacted by several cannabis developers who wish to build cannabis-friendly entertainment facilities here in Desert Hot Springs. Currently, the municipal code does not allow for cannabis entertainment facilities. Review and approval by the city council is necessary to move forward with the proposed ordinance to amend certain sections of Chapter 17.180 to allow and set parameters for marijuana entertainment facilities. Sorry, this mask is, I might have to take it off. So in an effort to remain business-friendly and create an economic development avenue to further expand the cannabis industry and cannabis tourism as laid out in the city council's cannabis strategic plan, staff has worked with the prospective developers to create a permit type which would enable marijuana entertainment facilities the ability to operate legally within the city of Desert Hot Springs. A marijuana entertainment facility means any facility or location, the primary function of which is an entertainment use, such as a movie theater, bowling alley, concert venue, et cetera, and at least one other of the following ancillary uses. A marijuana storefront retail facility and/or an onsite marijuana consumption venue. So what does this look like in practice? So just to give you guys an example of one of the proposals that came before us that led staff to start working on this, one of our developers by the name of John Berry reached out to the city and he had what we call the House of Blues concept. So John has purchased a piece of property off of Indian and what he wants to do is build an entertainment facility with a House of Blues type, you know, entertainment concept. And within that facility, he wants to be able to have a retail component to sell both cannabis inward-facing to folks that are onsite enjoying the entertainment venue, but also an outward-facing retail component so that his pencil, his project pencils out long-term and can sustain itself when they're not entertaining guests in the evening hours. In addition to that, John also wants to have the opportunity to allow his guests to have consumption, an opportunity to consume said cannabis products there in the House of Blues types lounge. And so with that in mind, that is how we kind of built this entertainment facility concept. The biggest takeaway here though is that entertainment must be the predominant use and then the other items are kind of tacked on as ancillary uses. So with that said, the proposed ordinance to amend certain sections of 17, Chapter 17.180, allow and set parameters for marijuana entertainment facilities and includes but is not limited to the following. So for the permitted locations, we are proposing that the marijuana entertainment facilities shall only be located in the commercial district and this would exclude however, the commercial downtown district where, where there is a moratorium on cannabis facilities. The industrial district, it would be allowed, or the mixed-use corridor district of the city. Marijuana entertainment facilities, again, whose primary function must be an entertainment use and include an entertainment use as previously mentioned, you know, the movie theater, bowling alley, concert venue, basically any type of entertainment premise. And at least one of the other following, and I'm going to kind of get into more, some more details on the following. So storefront retail facility, which would need to comply with all terms and conditions in Chapter 17.180, including all state and local laws. The storefront retail facility would enjoy all uses as provided in Section 17.180.045. The onsite marijuana consumption facility would need to comply with the following. Onsite marijuana consumption area within the confines of the entertainment facility shall only be attached to any storefront retail facility via non-public secure passageways and must be located on a separate premise, premise and otherwise comply with all local and state laws. We put that in there because we wanted to ensure that if we had an outward-facing dispensary that was also serving guests inside of an entertainment venue, that any transportation of said product from the storefront retail into the entertainment venue was being done in a, in a very safe fashion. So that's where the secured passageways come into play. The storefront retail facility that's attached to the storefront entertainment facility may sell marijuana products for both off-site and onsite consumption. Onsite consumption may only occur within the marijuana consumption area. Such onsite sales must be done and consummated by an employee of the entertainment facility via menu only. It is then delivered to the guest. Any marijuana-containing product not fully consumed onsite shall be properly packaged for the patron to take off-site. The smoking, inhalation, consumption or ingestion of cannabis or cannabis product shall not be visible from any public place or any area where minors may be present. The entertainment facility would need both a city-issued conditional use permit and a regulatory permit. They would need to comply with all local and state laws and the storefront retail facility and/or the onsite marijuana consumption facility or any other marijuana component of the entertainment permit would be subject to all applicable local taxes, including but not limited to those in Chapter 3.34, which is the dispensary tax that's already imposed on our storefront retail facilities. You will notice, following our special meeting that we had in June, that we did incorporate many of the items that we talked about with respect to the doggy bags, you know, for guests to be able to take product home, so those were incorporated in here. That includes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, so we entertain questions, staff now, or you can wait till the public hearing is, takes place and ask questions at that time. Is there anybody who would like to ask questions now before the public, before I open the public hearing? Sure.
I have more to say on this, but a quick question is, item B, under B, under 2BB, I guess you'd call it. It says, you may be consumed within the marijuana consumption area. So if this is a jazz and blues concert, where is the marijuana consumption area? Is it while sitting in your seat, watching the event? Is it some other room that somebody has to go to and then come back to the concert and so they're missing the concert during that time? What detail was worked out on that? I see you took the time to say that it, you know, inside this entertainment facility, it has to be consumed in this special area. What is the special area?
So each project is going to be different in what they're bringing forward. In the case of the House of Blues, it would be the understanding that the consumption area would be there at the lounge where they're watching the, the music or the jazz or whatever's taking place. Basically, what it would boil down to is any location that the project deems as a designated smoking area that is not viewable to the outside public or minors. And that would be done on a case-by-case, project-by-project basis and it's basically proposed by the project itself.
Okay, so we're doing a ordinance here, correct?
Correct.
But ordinance sits on a case-by-case basis rather than just laying out?
No, it's, it's an umbrella statement on a consumption area that's designated on a project-by-project basis. So the conditions would be set forth on a project-by-project basis, but just like any project, a hotel would have a designated smoking area. We don't know what that is when we build an ordinance.
That's what I'm asking.
Could it be similar to an ABC license? Sorry to interrupt. Could be similar to an ABC license when I owned a bar at one time, we had to outline on paper.
Correct.
Exactly where the areas would be so that ABC could approve that. I would assume it'd be similar.
Correct.
Where they would outline in the building drawing where the consumption areas would be and they would have to stay within those parameters.
So will there be discretion, say, if this is coming before the planning commission to say, well, you know, we don't agree with those areas, we want it to be here, we don't want it to be inside the concert venue?
The, the ABC, when I apply for an ABC license, that's basically the person that oversaw that did have that discretion to say, no, you cannot do it from there, you have to keep within these parameters. If we were, if you're, Lottie, I don't want to answer the question for you, I'm just saying.
That is correct.
I'll have other questions later, thanks.
You're welcome. Anyone else? All right, open the public hearing at this time, we'll take public testimony at this time. Who, how many, or I'm sorry, who is on the list to speak?
The first person I have is Courtney Karen.
Courtney, we're gonna, you're gonna go ahead and unmute yourself now and you may speak to this item.
Hi, thank you so much, everybody. I'm actually just here on behalf of, of John Berry, I'm his cannabis attorney, and I wanted to make myself available should there be any questions that John is unable to answer or that the council is, is concerned or confused about on this particular topic. I know in the ordinance, there was, was one specific section that we were concerned about and that was that the, the consumption lounge and the retail would be on separate premises. And from a, a legal standpoint, from the state standards, that would be an issue unless there was a cannabis license issued for each of the two premises. So if you have, you know, retail, the retail store on, you know, APN number one and you have the entertainment facility on APN number two and from APN number two, you are ordering cannabis and it is being filled on APN one, you would still have to have some sort of licensing on APN two that qualifies under a state license for that retail transaction to occur. So there, I think there was a little bit of confusion about, about whether or not that should be removed. Really, the retail location and the entertainment facility should be one, considered one premise for state licensing because that would be the only way to issue that retail license and have the order and fulfillment occur on the same property without needing at minimum a separate delivery license of sort. So it's just that, that particular section was a little bit confusing, but I would like to just be here in case there's any questions or in case John, you know, needs me to, to answer anything for the council. And, and thank you for what you're doing and the time that you're taking. I'm, I'm really impressed with the cannabis program that you're operating in Desert Hot Springs. Springs.
Thank you very much for your comments. Our next speaker?
Is John Berry.
Mr. Berry.
Yes. Good, good evening, mayors, council members. We want to thank you again for the opportunity of speaking on this proposed new ordinance. And as you've heard me indicate in the past, I really would once again like to commend your city staff and your city council in the work that they have done to bring this, you know, proposed ordinance to where it is today and in their forward thinking and their long term planning with regards to how cannabis is both viewed and put forth within the city. That's why, having said that, Courtney kind of made it fairly clear as to what our primary concern is as at this point in time with regards to the wording in the ordinance. It just seemed to be number one, very confusing as to whether you're talking about located on separate premises from the retail facility or from the entertainment venue. When from our perspective and on our project, they're basically one in the same in that they may have two separate public entrances so that you're not going from a retail store directly into the entertainment venue. And at the same time, you're not going directly from the entertainment venue into the retail store. But they are connected and in the wording of the ordinance, they're, they may be connected via non-public and secure passageway, which would be how we would envision our project to be structured so that in fact, product delivery can be made to the people in attendance in the entertainment venue via our employees and our staff that are delivering from the retail store via that non-public secure passageway. So the wording must be located on a separate premises just seems to be inapplicable and somewhat confusing in the ordinance. And that was quite frankly, our only real concern with the way that the ordinance is currently worded. But I will be happy to answer any questions that council may have with regards to our project or with regards to how we envision the ordinance being implemented.
Thank you for your comments tonight and we'll leave the public hearing open at the end and maybe get some of those questions answered if there is any. Next speaker?
Paula Smith.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank the city council and Mayor Mattis for hearing us this evening and for the city's incredible ability to work with us on this project. We're really happy to have been working with the city and, and I want to make one comment only on the item that we're discussing that Courtney had brought up and John Berry brought up as well. On the, the wording is perfect in the ordinance other than the one sentence that says and must be located on separate premises. The, all of the wording prior to that and after that is absolutely right on point, but that one portion of the sentence is confusing. It's also contradictory to the requirements of the entertainment facility must include either a storefront facility or a consumption facility or both. So it's really that one little portion of the sentence is, is confusing and also contradictory in my opinion. But the, everything prior to that and after that is perfect. I just feel that one portion and must be located on separate premises should probably be stricken, but everything else looks great. And again, happy to work with the city and all the council members and the mayor on this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Yes. Kenny Dickerson.
Yes, thank you very much. And congratulations on this, this item. This is a great step in the right direction. For Cochillin, we have a couple of items. Russ had brought up and was talking about two BB. For, and specifically for onsite consumption only to be consumed within the marijuana consumption area. And then you go on later to talk about packaging up marijuana products that weren't consumed on there and, and getting into that. I don't know how the logistics of that could ever work smoothly. And I would be greatly concerned in trying to get into the repackaging of marijuana products that have already been opened business. So I would ask that you reconsider that part. I would also ask that you reconsider part three, add, add some language that is really only for Cochillin, but for Cochillin, this marijuana entertainment will, will be a permitted use, not requiring a CUP. So I would ask that you add a sentence that basically says it, except where cannabis entertainment facilities are a permitted use so that Cochillin's protected because in Cochillin, we would not be pulling a CUP and a regulatory permit. We would only be pulling a regulatory permit. And this would only apply to our amphitheater. And then when you look at the, at the, the ordinance itself on B dash two, which I think is what everybody's referring to, where it says onsite marijuana consumption area, which shall comply with all of the following. And, and the previous speakers were talking about A onsite marijuana consumption area within the confines of the entertainment facility shall only be attached to storefront retail via non-public secure passages. For Cochillin and in our amphitheater, we would ask that you just remove that entire sentence or really rewrite it because the, the sales areas would be similar as, as concert venues. They're off streets, off, off of the, they're at the internal portion of the facility and you, there's no public secure passageways that are even possible. So it, this would almost render our amphitheater impossible to meet that part of the requirement. And then on B of the same, same area, two B, in addition to the offsite sales storefront retail attached to entertainment facility may sell marijuana products for onsite consumption. I would like you all to talk a little, Dory, if you wouldn't mind, expand on the discussion that was part of that for where you focused only on onsite consumption only, because I think the city's missing out on massive amounts of, of sales. For example, we had Blake Shelton in there doing a concert at the Cochillin Amphitheater and, and Dr. Rob Farms wants to sell, is going to offer, you know, 70% off on the Doc Rob Farms, one of their products, you know, or, or one of the people in our park wants to offer that and the products. Those are real sales that could be done at the end of the concert that would involve packaging up and would handle them, but those are sales the city would be missing if they were only attached to onsite consumption. And then under two D, could you please also talk about the sale or consumption of alcohol and tobacco products? Ninety-nine percent of the people I know smoke cannabis, I'd say over half of them smoke tobacco products as well and would have them on them at those. Now it wouldn't be sale, but they would be using them. And in the private club portion of our amphitheater and the private club portion of our touring and education facility, we have the same issue where it's a private club where we stock liquor for private, for the membership of the club. There's no sales, but there is liquor stored and or consumed. And, and we, I think we're missing out on a ton of other sales of people who don't smoke cannabis that would be buying beer and buying drinks and not having them available. So I would really like a, a long, hard look at having both. I think both are integral to the concert world. And then as, as you move down further, there in four and five and some of these others, they're affected by what, what I just spoke of in, in, in those. So if you could please consider those changes before you approve this, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public speakers?
That's everyone.
All right. I can leave the public hearing open if anybody has any specific questions for Courtney or, but let me see, before you guys get to that, maybe you can answer some of the questions here, see if that answers the council questions before they ask.
Sure. So first I'll take the comments from John and Courtney and Paula with respect to the separate premises. We have had exhaustive conversation about that since this went to planning commission. Very supportive of actually making the change, but I was not able to bring it forth that way. I needed to bring it forth the same way that planning commission approved it. Their logic certainly makes sense after doing research and looking at state law. State, state licensing is handled differently than we handle it here. So in order for them to be able to be compliant at both state and local level, the, the request that they are making does make sense to, to apply. So with that said, now to address some of the questions that Mr. Dickerson had, first and foremost, I did have some conversation today with Catherine with respect to how this ordinance, if it is approved, could be incorporated into their specific plan. And Catherine indicated to me today that they are going to be making some modifications to incorporate the definitions for this and the cannabis hotel one, if it does pass. So that would be allowed per a permitted use. And then those folks would just need to get a regulatory permit, which is consistent with how they operate there. Now with respect to Kenny's comments about the onsite sale, we are also proposing offsite sale as well. So that would take care of his concern of the loss of revenue if Dr. Rob Farms wanted to have, you know, 70% off discount to let folks take his product home. That is accounted for here.
Where would they find that?
So in, let's see, under number two, B subsection B says the storefront retail facility attached to a storefront entertainment facility may sell marijuana products for both offsite and onsite consumption. So it would allow for both offsite sale and consumption offsite, onsite sale and consumption onsite. So it would operate as your standard dispensary for, let's just not mince words. It would operate as a standalone dispensary, but would also be allowed to provide cannabis for the entertainment facility for onsite consumption. There was also some, and I'm sorry, I actually forgot the last two, maybe Mr. Dickerson.
There's one, so item D as in dog, the sale or consumption of alcohol or tobacco products. Could we, is there a process or a way that we could soften that? And I know the reason that you put that in there and just correct me if I'm wrong, it's because state law prohibits it right now.
Right. And we actually did contemplate that.
Could we soften it by saying as state law or, or as long as you follow state laws?
Yes. And actually I would like to ask our city attorney to, to kind of elaborate. We did have some very in-depth conversation about contemplating, you know, some possible changes in the future. And I believe that Jennifer did account for that, so I'll pass that to her.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We did kind of contemplate, I'd have to find it in the ordinance, but we did contemplate with respect to what happens if certain state law changes soften, you know, what exactly that would do to, to our ordinance. And I did have, give me just one minute, let me see if I could find it here. G, okay. So on page, on item, excuse me, page number 16 of your packet, G as in Gary. G as in George. If or when state laws and regulations allow for more uses for onsite marijuana consumption venues, such, such allowed uses may be allowed as follows. And it kind of gives kind of a little bit of a litany of administrative approval of allowing uses that we might not think of or things that change in the future. All of a sudden, let's say the, the state does allow alcohol and marijuana on the same premises. I, I don't see that in the near future, but it might one day. How these entertainment facilities can come to the city for administrative approval, allowing them to kind of change with the times. So I did include some language to hopefully, so people are not coming back all, you know, all the time for a new CUP, et cetera. But, but we will change with the changing of state law.
So if they follow the state laws on consumption and sales, or if the state softens its position, then they could do what they were asking?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I think that was the items. I'll go back to Mr. Dickerson in a second, just to make sure we covered all his questions. Actually, I'll go to you right now, Mr. Dickerson. Can we pull them back up real quick? I know there was, there was three items, I believe you had questions about. Did we answer those? Oh, secure passageways?
Yeah, I think you, I think you did a good job. No, that, that's fine. I, I wanted to make, just make the point that for now, right now, I'm talking about consumption only. And, and state laws, I don't think are getting, get in the way of consumption when it's a private lounge stocked private alcohol and, and consumption, consumed on the same premises.
And I think the way this is worded, you'd be allowed to do that if that's, if that's correct.
Correct.
I want to make sure that's, that, that it's very clear to everybody that we would be allowed to do that because that's how we're set up.
It, it states in here, if and when state laws and or regulations allow for more uses onsite marijuana consumption venues, such as allowances of alcohol sales and, and consumption, then you would be allowed to do it. So I, I believe it's written in here correctly. You would have no problems with that. You guys, does the city attorney agree?
I do. It's actually specifically mentioned in G.
Right. And I think just for, to Mr. Dickerson's point, it sounds like he's not necessarily concerned with onsite sale of, of alcohol. They just have the alcohol onsite and want to consume it or provide it for consumption, not for sales. And to, to my knowledge, there's nothing in state law currently that would prohibit the sale of cannabis, so long as you're not also selling alcohol on the same premises. Consumption of alcohol, as long as it's not sold there, does not conflict, it's to my knowledge at this point. It's a gray area.
Thank you, thank you very much. And the reason I left the public hearing open is because we have very few comments and we have two very obviously big developments coming that are going to be doing this. So I wanted to make sure that they got their questions answered. Mr. Betts, you said you had a question for the attorney?
No.
Not our attorney, but.
Question for.
Courtney.
Mr. Berry.
Or Mr. Berry?
So under, as you envision your project, people can come up, well, there'll be days when you're having concerts or entertainment as the main attraction of the facility. And then there'll be times when, do you envision that people can come up just solely for the purpose of buying cannabis, even though there's no concert or show going on?
Yes. I mean, we would, we would be operating a retail storefront that's, you know, in, in conjunction with our entertainment venue. And yes, people would be able to go into the retail store as they would any other retail store and purchase product to take home or wherever they're going at, at that point in time. These.
So on the, on the days when there's not a, I'm sorry, on the days.
I was gonna say. Our, our entertainment venue, I mean, obviously we're not, certainly I'm not at the beginning and actually under COVID restrictions right now, we would be dead if we were open today. But you're not going to have somebody in the entertainment facility every single night of the week, at least probably at least at the beginning stages. And without the opportunity of having cannabis sales from the retail store on days or nights when you're not having entertainment taking place, would be absolutely financially vital for our project. Our project would not be financially feasible if we did not have the abilities of having normal retail cannabis sales in addition to the nights where, days when we're having entertainment take place.
Okay. So I've been to concerts before and when you go up to, maybe you're going to get your tickets and the box office is open, but there's no concert that night. So you go up to the ticket office and you get your tickets, but this might be a situation where you go get your tickets, but you could also go into a dispensary located there onsite and purchase marijuana, just like you would at any other dispensary, right?
Correct.
Okay. So, and you had asked about the licenses. So why not a dispensary license and operate as a dispensary? And a separate entertainment license? Like when you walk into a movie theater, for example, you go buy popcorn or dots or soda pops or hot dogs. But in your facility, you would go up to the counter instead of popcorn, you'd be buying, uh, the cannabis products. And so why not two separate, uh, go in and have this, have a dispensary on that location that operates like a dispenser under all the existing regulations, the dispensaries? And then have your entertainment that would allow everything else you want to do related to the concert and being able to consume and buy during the concert? Why would that be objectionable?
Well, I'm, I'm gonna probably let Courtney Corona address it a little bit further. Um, but she also wants to address some of the, some of the points that were brought up, uh, by Mr. Dickerson also.
Okay. Well, if we could just stick to my questions and if she needs answers, that's great. I just want to control my time here a little bit.
The answer to your question is that from the, from a licensing standpoint with the state, they don't issue separate licenses for consumption or retail. That's just simply a retail sales license.
Okay.
So in essence, it'll be one license for the retail sales portion. And inside the entertainment facility would basically simply be fulfilling those orders that take place at the entertainment venue, um, directly from the store. So there's no need to have a second license and/or the expenses of getting two licenses when you're basically running one operation.
Okay. If you don't have any direct comments to them, we can come back to you.
I do, I'm trying to, I'm trying to thought here. So what this is going to be then, you're envisioning is somebody can walk in into where they would go, you, you're just gonna have, all right, so I got it. We're gonna be able, you want to be able to sell marijuana. So we're essentially creating a new and additional dispensary is what we would be doing with this.
Technically, yes.
Okay. All right. And then Kenny Dickerson had asked about repackaging used product. So that means somebody's consuming something and there's all kinds of packaging laws. Is that what you're referring, is Kenny Dickerson available to answer that? His concern was on that? Maybe he's left.
I would like Courtney, Courtney has lots of experience with, with other facilities that operate, you know, in consumption areas. And I would like her to actually address that particular question and how it's done.
Give me one second, Mr.
Other places.
Give me one second, Mr. Berry. The, the question was directed at Mr. Dickerson first. And then, uh, would you like to hear from this?
I'll thank, yeah, everybody.
Miss Karen?
Happy to hear that one.
Okay. Mr. Dickerson first and then, uh, to, to outline your question about that. And then I'll go to Ms. Karen.
I would love to hear, uh, the attorney address it. Uh, that'd be the best thing. But it is packed, uh, my concern would be packaging cannabis prod, products. Repackaging cannabis prod, products, you, you, would you be held to a original, the standard of, that you're held to when the product goes out the door as a retail sale? And it's something you're repackaging. So anyhow, with that, I'll yield.
Thank you very much. Courtney? She's still there.
Are they available on camera by any chance or are they all just by phone?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, now I can hear you.
Oh, great. Sorry, I was trying to follow the command shift thing and it just didn't unmute.
No worries.
Okay. So West Hollywood has a very similar, um, model and, and I represent a client in West Hollywood who is, um, is going to be opening their, their consumption lounge. And we've watched over the last year as the regulations in West Hollywood have, have changed. And I think that there's some similarities to be drawn for what you're trying to do to what their original model was. Um, originally in West Hollywood, they had consumption lounges that, um, could be of two forms. You could be a retail dispensary that had a specifically limited size consumption lounge onsite. So it would be one dispensary that maybe had a carve out of a thousand square feet that was for consumption. And you could purchase the cannabis at the retail counter and then walk into the consumption lounge, much like you would picture a cigar lounge. And their second model was having, um, more of an entertainment venue or a restaurant or something to that effect, where you would have, um, offsite, uh, from your actual retail license. So this would be a separate license. You would have, um, an entertainment venue and you could sell cannabis inside of that entertainment venue by utilizing what would be a state retail license. The difference is was that the, the, the first one that had the more smoking room inside, um, was basically, uh, being given to everybody who already owned a retail license, where the second one, the more entertainment ven, venue side, was a separate license that folks had to apply through their merit-based process. So the big issue that arose from that is, is much of what Mr. Dickerson's talking about and also what, um, what, what the city council member just asked about, which was, where do you purchase the cannabis and where is the cannabis consumed? And how many licenses do you need? And can you leave with the excess? And initially, the argument was that the city of West Hollywood did not want the excess cannabis that was unconsumed to be removed from the premise. But the cannabis retailer said, wait a second. Number one, on the market, there really isn't very many cannabis products that are small enough in scope when you purchase them to be fully consumed onsite without there being excess. So for example, if you were to purchase, um, uh, an edible, a mint, mints come in a pack of 20 or, or 50 or 100 or whatever. You're not going to be able to consume all of those mints onsite simply because of how long it takes the product, um, to be ingested and actually have an effect, um, versus how much comes in an actual product package. If you took a cookie, for example, one person might be able to eat an entire cookie, but a person, another person, uh, like me, for example, would only be able to eat a bite of that cookie and know that that's where my limit was going to occur. So what do you do with this extra cannabis? And so the city of West Hollywood said, it's, consider it a doggy bag. There are not state regulations that require that that cannabis be in anything except an opaque packaging when it's leaving the facility. So if you purchase cannabis in a mint tin, your mint tin would be exactly the same when you purchased it as when you left. The only type of product where this becomes somewhat, um, of an issue would be a food product like a brownie or a cookie or something like that. Because all other types of products are going to be in some sort of, um, opaque childproof packaging when they're purchased, because that's just how cannabis products are retailed now. So whether it's pre-rolls, whether it's flour, whether it's, um, gummies, mints, anything like that, a topical are all going to come in a resealable container that could just be put into an opaque packaging when you leave. The state doesn't even require the opaque packaging at this time, some cities do. But the resealable packaging is just part of what the industry as a whole packages their products in. So there really shouldn't be a concern about if you had a three-pack of pre-rolls and you open that three-pack of pre-rolls to smoke one joint and you have additional two pre-rolls left, you just reseal your package on your own. You can do that because that's how the packaging is made. And then you, you simply leave the facility like you would. From, from a public policy standpoint, I think we have to be really careful in not allowing people to take the cannabis with them when they leave. Because what that does is makes folks feel like they're going to be forced to consume all of the cannabis onsite. And that could really lead, um, people down to a path of overconsumption. And I think that that's why the city of West Hollywood really felt that it was important to allow people to leave with the cannabis, um, products. So I, I think that hits home on, on that particular question about leaving with the products and why it's important. With the licensing types, it's just a really fine line between ordering on one side, fulfilling on another side, having it be two separate properties, consuming back on the first side. I, I would be advising my clients, if that were the model present, that they apply for two separate retail licenses. And that's an extremely expensive endeavor. So if the city can find a way to incorporate the, the retail sales and the consumption on one premise and allow that to be the case, then, um, an applicant would only need to have one state license for retail and not two separate state licenses. Does that answer the, the questions that were asked?
Yes. I think you've given a bunch of information that we can now make some intelligent decisions on. I don't want to drag this out any longer. I think we're now repeating ourselves. So, uh, unless there's something that is, has not been answered here, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there anything that has not been answered by the testimony tonight? All right. So I, I appreciate all of you. I usually don't allow a lot of back and forth in public testimony, but I thought this is very important that we get this information out here. And you guys are experts in the industry. So I thank all of you that spoke tonight. And I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. And I'm going to go to city council discussions. Does anybody want to start? Mr. Griffith?
Uh, I just have some questions, mostly for clarification. In terms of the issue of the separate premises, um, maybe it's just semantics and we need to use something like separate areas. That is kind of what we're talking about. It's just keeping them separate, correct?
That's right. I think the term premises is used so specifically with licensing that it, it really garners this weight. The idea is that you want them kind of segregated in two different locations. Premises is a very heavy word with respect to licensing. So I, I think that's a great suggestion.
Okay. And on the issue with the amphitheater, my, what I'm envisioning, uh, what Mr. Dickerson said is, as, um, I'm looking at different entertainment things. So I'm looking at maybe Mr. Berry's project where you've got this storefront here and on this, this side, they're, they're listening and, and buying. Uh, but he's talking about just like concerts where you go and there's a vendor there, you know, and they've got the food. So in that situation, would not that, that secure passageway be the difference from, say, this is where I'm serving and there's a doorway and back here is actually where the product is and packaged and sent out? So would that not suffice?
It would. And that's where I say, and I hate to be so generic, when I say these things are handled on a project by project basis, but this is kind of the backbone, so to speak. And then, um, each project is going to have their own unique, um, you know, caveats to them. And, and as staff, we're going to work with them and we'll condition things accordingly so that it makes sense and it's workable with respect to the, the individual projects. Like all of our cannabis ordinances, I expect that at some point, this is going to be an organic document that we're going to need to take back to you guys and say, hey, we found that this may need a little tweak here and a little tweak there. Uh, but with respect to kind of how we've built this out, we really tried to think of all of the possible options. Um, I think we have a really good spine to work with. Um, we're going to handle it and condition projects. Um, but, uh, but if something's not working, we're going to bring it back to you guys, I promise.
Okay. And finally, because there's a lot of misinformation out there, especially on social media. Uh, and there is about this. And so I, I think there's this fear that you're going to have bowling alleys and things like that where kids are there and everybody's sitting around getting wasted. Um, and so these facilities are 21 plus, correct?
That is absolutely correct. All of these facilities must comply with local and state laws with respect to cannabis consumption and you must be 21 years of age or older.
Thank you.
Wow, you can do a public service announcement with that voice. Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a, a couple of things I wanted to clarify too. First of all, um, this is, this is, I think, uh, one of our better ordinances. I think this, I love the fact that we are leading the way in a lot of things like this when it comes to cannabis tourism and, and things. And it will really put DHS on the map. I wanted a little bit of clarification, getting back to sort of what, uh, council member Griffith and Mr. Dickerson were saying with the amphitheater. And if I heard you correct, because Coachella has its own specific plan, they can do that without, it, it, it overrides what this ordinance does. So their specific plan and their, whatever amendments they make to their specific plan would not exempt them, but, but those would take precedence over this ordinance.
Right. So, so what we had talked about with respect to Coachella and the, the permit requirements or the, the requirements for them to move forward with this license type. Coachella has, um, a number of uses within their specific plan that don't need to go through these, these rigorous, you know, uh, processes like a conditional use permit. They have it as a permitted use, uh, because Coachella has taken on a lot of those responsibilities underneath their specific plan. So that's what we're talking about with respect to Coachella. They're going to modify their specific plan to allow, if this passes tonight, to allow for this license or permit type to also be a permitted use within their project. Uh, so anybody coming into their project would be able to, um, benefit from, from that, that streamlined process, basically.
The, uh, I think we addressed the part about the alcohol consumption because that was another one that was raised is that, uh, the ABC laws right now, you cannot mix them. Now, if they ever change that law, then, then I'd like the escape clause that our city council put in there. So I think we're all covered with that one. Last one is the packaging. Um, I know, uh, in Palm Springs consumption ones, as well as the West Hollywood ones that Ms. Karen brought up, um, the way they do it there is they just put it in a, in, in a bag and staple it shut, which I, I'm not sure if that's a Palm Springs city requirement or not. But it's not repackaging a tin of gummies in another tin of gummies. It's, and with that one, I don't even know if, they, they just put it in a bag like you're leaving from the store and staple it shut like most of the stores do here and you're on your way. Is that what you're envisioning with, with repackaging when you say that?
Right. And, and it, you know, when we say that they're properly packaged for the patron to take offsite, they would need to comply with all local and state law. So it's, it's, it's really the responsibility of each project to understand what those requirements are. Cannabis compliance team will be looking at those items when they go out to do inspections. Uh, but, but the idea is they must be compliant with local and state law. And so if state law mandates it's an OPEC packaging, then that's what they'll need to comply with. If it, you know, whatever it is that state law mandates, they need to comply with that.
But if you're on onsite and you're baking cookies there onsite, they're obviously not going to come in the kind of packaging that you normally would get from a dispensary if you were buying a pre-made, pre-packed cookie.
Double, double tin them.
Probably put it on a plate, you go take a bite out of it. Oh, I need to take the rest of this home. You take it up to the counter, they put it in a opaque baggie, zip tie it shut, whatever. And then away you go. So, yeah, I don't, I, I don't see that as being terribly, uh, burdensome in that sense. And, uh, that's all that I've got. And then if we need to, when we make a motion on this to remove, uh, the, uh, must be located on separate premises part of sub two, I would be open to doing that. Thank you.
Ms. Paul, anything?
I only, um, it's a good ordinance. I do appreciate, um, the city manager, city attorney putting in the what ifs. The state allows things. And I, um, personally had asked Dora Williams a lot of questions about this. And so I'm comfortable, I did have questions about the separate areas. And that was my main thing. Well, it was a lot of things, but that was the one I was not comfortable with. So I'm cool.
Mr. Betts?
So I say this at the start of one of these days marijuana is going to be legal. Uh, right now it's just overregulated and, um, you know, we have just, it's incredible to me to see, you know, all these generations. So we got marijuana entertainment facilities shall be located in a commercial district. And we're permitting offsite sales, which is be akin to a dispensary is what it seems to be where we're headed on this. But it also says they can be in the industrial district and the mixed-use quarter, which mixed use would be residential. So we'd be allowing dispensaries in a residential. And I get the mixed use part, somebody moves into a mixed use district, they're going to be surrounded by that. But here we're deviating significantly from what we've said before in that we had, first off, a marijuana entertainment facility is a, it's basically a movie theater like they enumerate here, movie theater, bowling alley, and all that would be in the commercial district. It wouldn't be zoned in the industrial district. So I'm curious as to why we've included industrial district as a permitted location. That, that's the first thing here is, is so we're deciding now.
Do you want that answered?
Well, I'm just pointing it out. This is what we're doing. And it's, I mean, it's a discussion for council. But, uh, so according to this, we are now, and that would be the conscious decision of the council is that we are now going to allow commercial, what's traditionally considered a commercial use in the industrial district. I don't see the reasoning, I don't know why, why we would deviate from that to all of a sudden now allow that. We're also in effect, when you get down to, I'm reading out the staff report. In addition to the offsite sales portion of this, we're now in effect taking the number dispensaries from 16 to however many come along and apply. We've lifted that restriction because this is in a sense creating an offsite. This is allowing offsite sales. is allowing off-site sales as long as they're an entertainment venue. So we're increasing the number of retail locations where somebody can buy stuff, you know, seven days a week during the normal operating hours of a dispensary. I presume they have to follow the same operating hours as a dispensary when they're doing off-site sales. So, you know, seven days a week, what is it, 10 to 10, something like that? So we're with this, we are now lifting that limit on the number of dispensaries. We're saying as long as you're an entertainment value, there's, the number of places you can go buy marijuana is increasing. There's some of the language in here, I think, is really, as you could see here in the conversation today, each one of us is coming up with their own interpretation of what that means and saying, is that right? Is that right? But it's not embodied in what's printed here. And so that's going to lead to confusion down the road, I think. That's what I'm seeing as a problem here. I remember one time way back when Hughes Aircraft was trying to come up with a thing on the use of a copy machine, and my brother comes home to me with three pages of dialogue, and I go, what are you trying to say? And he's trying to say, well, if anybody needs one copy, just use a piece of carbon paper and the typewriter, don't go to the copy machine just to make one copy, they're trying to save money. And I think we've gotten into that type of wordiness here where we've dug in so deep that it's not clear. To me, it's clear as mud, some of this stuff, and that's evident in the comments. And if you take all of, everything that's been transcribed here, if you transcribed this meeting, you're going to find out there's a whole bunch of stuff that's been talked about that's not included here. So that tells me that it's going to have to be enumerated in a motion as Councilmember Gardner suggested on the one item. Every one of these things that have been talked about, if we all agree, has to be put into the first reading tonight and noted, or it's got to come back in a second reading, which is just come back for a second reading with all those items specifically listed, and then we go over them. The entertainment facilities shall obtain both a city-issued condition use permit and a regulatory permit. And this is the same question that comes up. Why do each item, why does each business that come along, it's the same type of business, need to get a conditional use permit every time? If you go into Palm Drive and you have a hair salon or a, whatever it is, a normal business, they just come in, they don't have to go get a condition use permit. If we're saying that this type of business is permitted, I don't understand why we are always requiring a conditional use permit for each one of these. And the council talked about this a long time ago. In fact, we said in the industrial parks, each project didn't need to come forward and get a conditional use permit as long as they met the certain requirements, they go in and just get their regulatory permit and their development, whatever it is. So I don't know why we're requiring into this ordinance that every new venue that comes along gets a condition use permit. They're all going to be the same, they're all going to meet the certain conditions already for that zoning, which is basically everywhere in the city except for the downtown commercial district, and I presume strictly residential, they're not allowed either. So I don't understand the use for the condition use permit, I don't think we need it, that we need to strike that. And some of this sounds like we're working on a project approval and not an ordinance, and maybe we're just using the project to guide how this ordinance gets developed. But if we're going to do that, we need to make sure it fits everywhere because we're just coming up with way too many deviations from what we have here in front of us. And I would, I would be more comfortable if this came back, taking all this into place and then incorporating that into the first reading and trying to see what else we had here.
He's not done.
So here's smoking inhalation, it references where minors may be present. So we've established this is 21-only, so we don't really need language, there's nowhere that minors are going to be present in any of these facilities, correct? Is a 21 facility, when you go into the casino...
It's 21 and older, but the reason why we have that, of course, is to make it perfectly clear that minors will not be present, you know, if people are ingesting cannabis.
Okay, but this leaves the impression that minors could be present somewhere in here. If you go into like one of the casinos, you say, hi, can I bring my children into the food court? No, absolutely nobody allowed. So I just, I don't know why it would even leave that in there, I'd just strike that out of there, and maybe we're splitting hairs, but you really don't need where minors are present, it'd be a 21 facility only, as Councilmember Griffith pointed out. Anyhow, I'm not entirely, I'm totally in agreement with the idea for the venues. I think the people who spoke during the public comment part of this public testimony had questions. I think they think they heard answers that they liked, but I don't think the answers they got are written here, so I'll be interested to see how we work that out. That's all I have right now.
Ms. Pye?
Mr. Betts, I have to disagree. Separate areas, which you spoke about, Ms. Williams had to bring this to us the way the planning commission brought it. And that's where we had the go-between, which made the two, as we had called it, premises separate, which made for two different permits. However, just like we do with other things with the planning commission that we don't agree with, we agreed with the separate areas, and we agreed that it needs one permit. That was one thing. Industrial, we already have marijuana facilities in the industrial area. It is not in the commercial area along Palm, and that is what we said with the 16, we're not going over that. But as things are changing, that's why it's going into industrial, and that's clearly stated. And with the, if you have kids there that are under 21, then you can't sell cannabis, that should be in there because that is what makes it clear. I'm done.
And I'm going to, if I could respond that quickly.
I'm going to do this.
Well, I was told I was wrong, and I couldn't quite figure out what was wrong.
Go right ahead.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make my comments last then.
Okay, thanks, just appreciate it. I don't know what I was wrong about. We're moving dispensary into the industrial area, and that's what this does. And so I don't understand how, what Palm Corridor has to do with that. I just want the council to be aware, contrary to Councilman Pye's interpretation of that, is it's not just 16 along Palm Drive, it's more than, it's everywhere in the city.
Yeah, you made that point.
And while I'm just, was suggested that that was wrong, that that wasn't correct, and so, okay, so I just want to make sure that's clear, that the final word on that would be what I agree on, that I said. So there you go. You can now be mayor again, thank you.
Thanks. I'm just going to, I just want to make a few comments before everybody else gets a second round. I haven't had a first round. First of all, I agree with Ms. Williams, and I know this would be a shock to a lot of people, I agree with staff, sorry, that she's written a document based on the needs that our attorney says should be in there and will protect the city for now. I also agree with her, this is an organic document, and unfortunately, ordinances change all the time. Our constitutional amendments change, go figure that, over time. And over time, these documents might go away because state law might have their own laws and stuff. But for right now, it protects us. I really appreciate the public testimony tonight because Ms. Karen, your comments were spot on, you gave clarity to a lot of these questions that I had in here, and I think this is a great start. I don't think we should remove anything from there, I think there's a couple additions somebody might want to add. I appreciate all the concerns up here, I just think we're getting too far into the weeds here, and it, this document will protect us for now. And as Mr. Dickerson has his first major event, he's going to find issues with it and come back to us and say, can we fix this? As Mr. Berry, God willing, opens his facility after this COVID stuff goes away, and he says, I have some issues, they are, I don't mean this is a bad thing, but you're kind of our guinea pigs when it comes to it because you're going to be the first ones to open these entertainment venues. And again, kudos to Desert Hot Springs, we're inventing the will, not reinventing it today. So I'm very proud of what's been accomplished here today. I understand the concerns, and as we debate a little more, which I hope gets over soon, we can get to a motion, add some things, take away some things, and we'll go from there. Mr. Griffith, and then Mr. Gardner.
So I just want to clarify regarding the mixed-use, the way I read it is mixed-use corridor. And when we did the rezoning, one of the things I remember, because I worked on that, was making Palm Drive mixed-use corridor so that we could have, say, affordable housing on top of retail. It is not mixed-use all over the city, it is just that corridor area because there is commercial and above, and they might be prime places to place an entertainment facility. So I just want everyone to understand, it's not all over the city, it, mixed-use corridor is a specific area, which you can see on the zoning map.
Mr. Gardner?
And you raised the exact same point I was going to bring up, but I'll also add into there, the addition of putting it into the industrial areas is to cover places like Coachella, which is industrial zone and is not a mixed-use zone or a commercial zone, it is an industrial zone. And so that way, he can have his facility there, somebody could put one in one of the other industrial parks that also are primarily cannabis out there. And quite frankly, it gets it away from the traffic corridors, so if we do have people out there having a concert and they've had a little bit too much, they're not going to be in the middle of the traffic.
Ms. Williams?
I'll be brief. The only clarification I do want to make sure is pointed out, I know Councilmember Betts had some concerns about storefront retailers in the industrial zone. And just for clarification's sake, a standalone storefront retailer would still only be allowed in the commercial district. We still only allow 16 of those here in the city. This is not a standalone retail store. This is an entertainment facility that as part of its license will have the ability to have a retail component and a consumption component. That is a very different thing. While it will allow for off-site sales, it is not standalone, there are other components which makes it unique, and that's why we've created this license type.
Could you say this is similar to the next item that we'll be discussing on cannabis hotels?
Correct, that is also a new license type, unique, new, we're trying to implement the cannabis strategic plan as laid out by the city council.
And, Mr. Mayor, I didn't, I don't know, heard my name there, so just respond, I didn't, I didn't say that it was a standalone facility, I recognize it is. The point I made is that there will now be more than 16 places where a consumer can drive in their car, pick up something, buy it, and leave. And so to that extent, we're extending, expanding the number of places that you can buy it. Right now, it's at 16. This goes through, it'll be at 17, 18, 19, 20, however many people want to come in here, and all I'm doing is, I'm not arguing the point, I'm just raising the point so that everybody understands. So when the public says, hey, I thought you were only going to allow 16, well, now it's infinite. That's what this does. This allows an infinite number of, whoever wants to come through with a marijuana entertainment facility and off-site sales will be able to, no restriction, as many as we want, so we can end up with 100 locations in the city where you could do off-site sales. That's the point I'm making.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
And I'll need help with one of you, too, that we approved the amendment with using separate areas.
I've got a written text.
Oh, well, you go. You go.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
Oh, okay, well, I was just going to, I think we all recognize that we're, that we may have additional dispensaries out there, but the 16 that we have authorized haven't all even been used either. And this one requires you to have a movie theater, a bowling alley, a bar, a restaurant, some other piece in there. So I, with all due respect, I don't see 100 of these things popping out here, the market wouldn't even cover that for the entire Coachella Valley. So maybe one or two, but we're not going to expand it.
Ms. Pye asked for the debating to stop and for the motion to start.
So I will make a motion then that we, that we, I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance of Chapter 17.180, allowing and setting parameters for marijuana entertainment facilities with an amendment to subsection 2, deleting the phrase "and must be located on separate premises."
Does that encompass everything that we, I'm looking at nods, is...
I don't think, I think it's replaced with separate areas.
It's, well, I'm quoting directly from it here. It says, Sub 2 says, why did it go away? There it is.
Ms. Marie, she's going to...
I think that it's, instead of possibly, it is, it's on page 15 on the top of your page, it says, "and must be located on a separate premises." What we, what I think it should be is, "and must be located in a separate area." Is that correct? Okay.
I will defer to you, I was just writing it down as we were discussing it here and the location for it, so.
All right, that's your motion, is there a second? There's a second, I'm going to have those put on the screen, comments, yes?
I'd just like that included in this motion would be, anything the staff, as they review this meeting and pick up anything else that comes through on the second reading, I think there was probably more discussed as far as changes go than, and I'm not talking about just my comments, but I thought I heard a whole lot more come into this, they're going to review this and bring that back in the second reading. So it would be Mr. Gardner's motion and any other significant details staff picked up in the discussion today.
That would be up to the motion maker.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
So if there's any details the staff picks up that they think was a consensus...
Did we get anything else on there?
From the council that you could bring it back in the second reading.
They're going to think of something.
Okay, so basically what it's been, it's been laid out, so we don't get another whole debate going, is that Mr. Gardner's motion is to approve it as-is with the addition of that language for the area. And then if Mr. Betts said if there's anything else that staff picked up during the comments that was a consensus from the council, they would bring back in the second reading if they thought it was a consensus. Is that good enough, or does it matter?
Why don't we, why don't we go stick to the original motion, and if there is something that, that comes back, then they can bring it back and we'll redo it all, but I think we stick with that.
Original motion, is that agree with you?
With what he said, yes.
I'll make a prediction, there'll be something come back different, but okay, let's go.
All right, no more discussion? Please vote.
I'm showing that I moved and voted.
Go ahead and give a voice vote. There you go. All right, Mr. Sariano?
Motion passed unanimously, and this is the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council, City of Desert Hot Springs amending certain sections of Chapter 17.180, allowing and setting parameters for marijuana entertainment facilities. The ordinance will return for second reading on January 19th, for a second reading and adoption as amended.
All right. Item number five is an ordinance of the City Council, the City of Desert Hot Springs, California, adding sections to Chapter 17.180, cannabis hotels of Title 17, zoning of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code regarding regulations of cannabis use at hospitality businesses. Ms. Williams?
Mr. Mayor, I need to requeue since I work at El Morocco in hospitality and this affects my business.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Williams, when he's off the diash, you may begin.
Good evening again. So during the June 5, 2018 City Council Study Session on Cannabis, staff was directed to work with a moderator to facilitate the development of a unified City Council vision regarding cannabis. As part of the data gathering process, staff was also directed to form a cannabis task force comprised of cannabis industry experts to create proposals for City Council consideration. The proposals were reviewed, along with the City Council's ideas, during a cannabis strategic planning session that was held on October 24, 2018. The cannabis strategic planning session resulted in action items that formulate proposed initiatives for strategies to support the City Council's intended vision. During the March 19, 2019 City Council Study Session on the Cannabis Strategic Plan, City Council unanimously agreed to approve the Cannabis Strategic Plan with the understanding that certain items would return in the future requiring, excuse me, Planning Commission and City Council approval. The Cannabis Strategic Plan produced a strategy map outlining the city's vision, guiding principles, goals, and initiatives for growing and developing the cannabis industry in the city of Desert Hot Springs. One of the goals of the City Council's Cannabis Strategic Plan is to build cannabis tourism to enhance the spa city heritage, and with an underlying initiative, to consider regulations for hotel spa usage of cannabis products and businesses to provide off-site sampling. On June 30, 2020... On June 30th, 2020, the city council held a special meeting to discuss a number of cannabis related items. Staff presented the proposed ordinance adding chapter 17.230, cannabis hotels of title 17, zoning of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code to the city council for discussion. During this meeting, the city council provided direction to staff to proceed with bringing the proposed ordinance forward to the planning commission and city council for action in the fall. The proposed ordinance adding chapter 17.230, cannabis hotels of title 17, zoning of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code regarding regulations of cannabis use at hospitality businesses, was brought before the planning commission in line with the cannabis strategic plan for review and approval. On October 13th, 2020, the planning commission reviewed and approved the recommendation to the city council to move forward with said ordinance. The purpose of chapter 17.230 is to regulate all hotels in which cannabis may be sold and consumed on the premises. This chapter is intended to protect the public health, safety and welfare, and additionally to mitigate the cost and burden on the city stemming from local control, oversight and regulation of hotels that provide cannabis. A marijuana hotel facility means a hotel motel or other transient lodging facility as defined by chapter 3.20 of this code that possesses a permit issued pursuant to this chapter. Patron means a registered guest of a hotel or motel. Patrons shall not include any visitors or customers who do not register as guests. The proposed ordinance would allow marijuana hotel facilities the ability to operate in the following fashion. Marijuana hotel facility shall be located in commercial districts excluding the commercial downtown district, mixed use corridor district and visitor serving mixed use district in the city. Marijuana hotel facility shall not allow any on-duty employee to consume any marijuana or marijuana products on the premises, admit entry into the premises including both indoors and outdoors, any person who is under 21 years of age, sell, serve or permit the sale or serving of marijuana or marijuana products to persons other than patrons, distribute any meat, any free samples of marijuana or marijuana products on the premises, sell, serve or permit the sale or serving of marijuana or marijuana products to patrons who are visibly intoxicated, permit any public nuisances, allow smoking or vaping of any products outside of the designated and marked smoking areas, display any marijuana product the hotel is selling, and instead shall only provide a menu of marijuana products to patrons. Marijuana hotel facility shall store marijuana containing products out of sight and in accordance with state law. They will be allowed to display empty packages of marijuana containing products and/or provide a menu of marijuana containing products to patrons. They can create and maintain an active account within the state's track and trace system. Not they can, they must create and maintain an active account within the state's track and trace system required, uh, by Business and Professional Code Section 26067 prior to commencing any commercial marijuana activity. They shall ensure that the consumption of marijuana or marijuana products is not visible from the outside of the business. They must comply with any and all conditions specified in their conditional use permit and regulatory permit. They must ensure that consumption areas have adequate sta- uh, security and lighting for the safety of patrons and protect the premises from theft at all times. They must comply with all state alcohol requirements. They must have, um, notify patients verbally and through postings of signs in conspicuous locations that entry to the premises by persons under age of 21 is prohibited. They must install odor absorbing ventilation and exhaust systems so that odor generated inside the premises is not detected outside the premises. They must properly, properly designate any and all smoking areas. All designated smoking areas shall be 50 feet from any property line or residential use. They must place and properly maintain solid waste receptacles and recycling bins in sufficient numbers and locations to service the needs of the proposed use at the peak business periods and properly repackage any and all cannabis or cannabis products that are partially consumed to be taken off-site. No hotel motel or other transient lodging facility as defined in chapter 3.20 may sell, offer to sell, prepare for sell or otherwise provide marijuana or marijuana products to patrons, nor allow the onsite consumption of marijuana or marijuana products to patient, patrons without first obtaining both the city issued conditional use permit and regulatory permit. Uh, obviously motel, uh, marijuana hotel facilities must comply with all local, uh, and state laws as it pertains to any and all uses at all times. And they shall be subject to any and all applicable local taxes, including but not limited to those in chapter 3.34. Uh, marijuana hotel facility shall be subject to all applicable taxes, including but not limited to those, um, that are listed in chapter 3.34 and any, um, and all transient occupant taxes, occupancy taxes as well. That concludes my staff report. I am happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Before I open the public hearing, is there any questions from council? Mr. Betts?
So under, um, the staff report, the second page down at the bottom, very last sentence says, "allow smoking or vaping of any products outside of designated area." Do you mean any cannabis related products?
What number you on?
It's, I'm, I'm not on the pa- I'm sorry, I'm on the staff report. I've just printed it out separately. I could go find the page if you want, but it would be the second page of the staff report. I'll try and find it.
So the smoking areas that are designated apply to both cannabis and tobacco, so they, they're one in the same?
So you mean allow cannabis smoking and vaping of cannabis products?
It would be any smoking. It's, it's not just cannabis, any cannabis or tobacco. So the, the state law is the same for both cannabis and tobacco. They must be in designated smoking areas.
Okay. So all smoking and vaping must be in designated smoking areas? Okay. Um, and then you got properly repackage any and all cannabis. We left that alone in the last go around. We decided we were going to continue to all, to say that it must be repackaged, right? So instead of if whatever the attorney said is, it didn't need to be concerned with that, we kept that in the last ordinance. We, you want to keep it in this one as well? And, um, I guess I'd be for the council. And that's the only question. And you're still advocating that a hotel that decides they're already a hotel but want to become a marijuana hotel has to go get a new CUP?
Correct. So this, this, there's, there's the difference here. So we, we've got a model right now that's being operated here in town. It's the old, what is it, Desert Hot Springs dog spa, it's the old dog spa. Um, and so they're, they're operating with a loophole, quite frankly. So they do not provide a retail, they do not have a retail component, a retail license. So what they do is they allow patrons to bring their own personal cannabis on site and they provide a venue for them to consume in. They do not need a conditional use permit to allow that to happen. This ordinance here as written would require a conditional use permit because you are enabling a retail component. It is an inward facing retail component so that the cannabis hotel can have a retail component to sell cannabis product to their guests. And that's where the sensitive use comes in, which would require the conditional use permit.
Okay, so if they're selling on site, they have to have a conditional use permit. So they got to take their existing conditional use permit and modify it or create a whole brand new one?
It's my understanding that they could modify their existing conditional use permit to change the use to a cannabis hotel.
And that would go to the planning commission?
Correct. It would go before the, the adjudicating bodies.
Okay. And then, um, but of course it's legal in California to smoke at anywhere you want to, well, certain designated areas. So any hotel that doesn't want to sell it can continue to allow, okay, continue to have patrons smoke or not smoke as long as it's in designated smoking areas.
That is correct. And so what we see happening right now, uh, many of the, the boutique hotels are partnering with some of the local dispensaries and they're providing avenues for deliveries to take place to their hotels and they would not need a conditional use permit to continue that practice. This would just be for hotels that want to have a retail component on site. And we have many hotels that have approached us because they want to have specially curated products specific to their location. Two Bunch Palms Resort is a prime example. They want to have specially curated products that they can have, you know, created and packaged specifically for their guests that wouldn't just include your traditional cannabis products. It would include, you know, lotions and massage oils and all sorts of stuff that they can have specifically branded. And this would allow them the opportunity to do that legally.
Okay. And so there would be, that would increase the number of locations in the city that somebody can go and do off-site purchases, correct?
It would not be off, this is, this is sep- different from the last, um, uh, license that we just saw. This would not allow for off-site sales. This is inward facing sales only. So registered guests only would be able to purchase at that retail site.
Okay. And so a registered guest at a hotel would be somebody who's checked in to stay the night?
Not necessarily. So we do have hotels here that do register guests for day use. And so it would be in whatever practice the hotel has. So if they register guests for day use, that would be an appropriately registered guest that would be able to purchase product from that site, whether it be lotions or cannabis product, however it may, may be. But it, it would need to be a bona fide registered guest, however that pans out for those.
And there's no dollar amount tied to that. So if I wanted to go, if, if the day use was a dollar, I go pay him a dollar and then I can buy whatever I want to from them as a, for offsites purchase.
So we don't have anything in here currently that, that ties it to a dollar amount. Um, council can certainly put something in there that, that, you know, requires that a specific amount be paid for guests to be considered patrons. Um, so, so that would be at your discretion.
I'm not inferring anybody's questions. I'm just trying to get clarification as to how this works. So, okay, good. That's all my questions of staff. Thanks.
There's actually a point to be made there. So if the City Desert Hot Springs wanted to get into the cannabis business and we wanted to open up a, add a, one up at our pool and we only charge a quarter to get in there, then they could take a lot of product off there. So you really had a point there, you know? People could get, or get around that by charging less for day use. So maybe it's something to think about to, you know, put a dollar amount on there that they.
You had me, almost jumped in on that one and you had me. Well, yeah. Mr. Buckheim said our finances are in pretty good shape, so I don't think we need to, to be earning some money on that. So it's a nice idea though.
There's something to be said there, so.
Um, I just wanted to double clarify just for mainly for, for, uh, for, for people that haven't, haven't really paid too much attention to this. This is for the guests only. It is not another outside facing thing. So also, so let's for instance, say, um, we have a big hotel that has, doesn't have an age limit restriction on it. They would not be able to get this type of a license, would they? The entire complex would have to be 21 and older. So for instance, let's say I bought a day pass to go to, uh, Miracle Springs. You, they could not do this because they're, unless they chose to limit the entire hotel property to 21 and over. So places like Two Bunch Palms that already does do that, they're going to be, or some of our boutique hotels who decide they want to go into that can do that, right?
That's correct.
It still has to be, everybody on the hotel has to be 21 and, and the people who purchase these products have to be registered guests of the hotel.
That's correct.
Yeah. So, uh, I just wanted to clarify that. That's all I've got. I do have, are, if you're, are we taking public testimony on this?
I haven't yet. If you want to wait till after that, then we'll get a debate. Anything before that? All right, we'll open the public hearing at this time and take public testimony. Do we have any public testimony?
Yes. Kenny Dickerson?
Mr. Dickerson?
Yes, hello and thank you again. Um, another fantastic ordinance for this city. I'm super, super pleased with you guys getting on these here before year end. This is all positive. Um, if you look on the agenda item report, uh, in the background on the second, bottom of the second paragraph, it says, "build cannabis tourism to enhance the spa city heritage." Very cool. With an underlying initiative to quote, "consider regulations for hotel slash spa usage of cannabis products and businesses to provide off-site sampling." I think this is again what we were talking about in the last one, that there's a little bit of confusing language. And so as read, I would say, why not onsite sampling? Why, I'm a little confused, but just by the language. Um, and then if you go to the discussion page, um, uh, I just want to make clear on the, I'm, I'm on marijuana hotel facility shall not. And, and those bullet points, and I'm down toward the bottom, second to last one that says, "allow smoking or vaping of any product outside of designated marked smoking areas." And we've made that clear. Um, I just want to make sure that venues such as our amphitheater and/or, or our, our hotel pool area, the entire pool area will be a designated smoking area. And I think what I heard from city council and staff was that that would be okay and was going to work. Um, and then if you go to marijuana hotel facilities shall, uh, and, and I'm on the very last one and, and, and council member Betts just brought this up, and I think this is a, actually a very wise point. I, I would recommend to city council to remove, properly repackage any and all cannabis and/or cannabis products that are partially consumed to be taken off-site. And the only reason I would remove it for hotels is this. Um, I think it may limit us, um, to ever be able to fly a, one of the name brands, your Westons, your Marriott, your whomsoever coming into, to the park. Now, I have a hotel operator for my wellness hotel. We have yet to decide whether we will fly a, um, fly a, a, one of the name brand flags. Uh, we've been asked to fly the Weston brand. Um, and so I want to, what I, what, and, and they will not get into the practice of, um, of packaging or unpackaging cannabis products. They may sell them on there, but they, they're going to want to stay a degree removed. And I think, I think you have an issue with that. So, um, I would just bring it up as a caution. It's not a deal killer, but I, on this one for hotels, I think you should consider that. On the next paragraph that says, "conditional use permit slash regulatory permit," again, um, uh, keeping Cochelon in mind, and I understand Doria's got this worked out and we can, we can, um, uh, when we do our next amendment, we can, um, address this. But it would help if you just added the word "or." So i- in the middle of the paragraph, it says, "without first obtaining both a city issued conditional use permit and/or a regulatory permit." Cause in the, in the in- instance of Cochelon, of course, it'd be a regulatory permit only. So it's, it's what was talked about in that. Uh, and that's all I have on this one. Um, I'll yield. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next public comment?
That's everyone.
All right. So we'll close the public hearing at this time and I'll see if you can answer those questions.
Yes. So, um, first, under the background section, Kenny, that you had mentioned, um, you looked at the, the section that's quoted to consider regulations for hotel spa usage of cannabis product and can't, and businesses by providing off-site sampling. That verbiage was taken from the cannabis strategic plan, um, and the session that took place. And what we were trying to highlight was, we're moving forward with this cannabis hotel ordinance consistent with the cannabis strategic plan. I know the wording is a little bit confusing. It doesn't apply to the hotel ordinance specifically. It was just a, a, a reference point, um, and, and a quote that was taken during the cannabis strategic planning session. So, um, I apologize for that confusion. Um, with respect to the designated smoking areas, um, yes, you are correct. If, and this is again why it's so important that these cannabis hotels are specifically excluded for, you know, to only have, um, uh, patrons that are 21 years of age and older. You can designate the whole darn place a designated smoking area, quite frankly, if you choose to, so long as it is consistent with state law, because there's some employee variations that Jennifer would love to go over, I'm sure. Um, but, but that, that isn't, if you want to say the whole pool deck is a designated smoking area, that could in fact be the case. Um, and then, um, with respect to the last item on the repackaging, um, I will defer to the city council. I think that would be a policy decision. This is what we've placed in there, but it would certainly be at your discretion if you want to make that change.
And there was one more question on the "and/or."
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Mayor and members of council, this, don't forget, this is outside of the Cochelon specific plan. So the Cochelon specific plan would have its own regulations and, um, and I don't know whether or not, obviously it was just amended, so I don't know whether or not, um, they have contemplated a cannabis hotel similar in nature to what we're contemplating here. But the reason why I would not recommend changing that is because all cannabis hotels that are not in the Cochelon specific plan, don't forget that is its own bubble with its own, uh, regulations, would need both a CUP and a regulatory permit. So I would not recommend changing, um, the language on page five.
Okay, I just.
I'm sorry, page 28.
I mean, I'm not debating you because you're an attorney and I'm not, but why would it matter if we put "and/or" and it was only one facility, one, does it really matter legally?
It, it, it does, because what, what it does is if, if you're a cannabis hotel, um, that's operating not in the Cochelon specific plan, that has its own rules, you would need both a CUP and a regulatory, a regulatory permit at all times. "And/or" suggests that it could be "or." And it would never be "or" unless you have a specific plan that overrides some of our general.
So how would Cochelon get around this? Cause it says "and," so what, what?
So good, as I said, so this, this kind of use would need to be also in their specific plan. Their specific plan is a very comprehensive document. I do not know one way or the other. it's over, I think, like 126 pages, last time I checked, but it, it's a very comprehensive document, so if this use is included in their specific plan as a permitted use, and a permitted use obviously was not, does not need a conditional use permit, then whoever, whomever that hotel operator would be, would only need a regulatory permit in the specific plan.
Okay, so they're protected, and it just protects us to make sure the rest of the hotels.
Correct.
Comform to both permits?
Correct.
All right, Mr. Gardner?
Getting back again to the packaging, which I think we're spending way too much time on, but I'm gonna try to clarify again, as I recall, and maybe Jennifer or Doria, you can correct me, but doesn't state law require something to be, that is taken off-site to be packaged? So, all we're doing in this case is, is following the state law that requires something taken off-site to be packaged, again, getting back to, like, let's say the hotel bakes their own brownies, in order to take that off-site, you're going to have to put that into something, something if it's already in a package, an approved package, and I know the state approves every single package that any kind of cannabis product has, if it's already in that package, then it doesn't need to be repackaged, correct?
Can we take that, before you leave that, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just had a thought, and in my age, I need to get it out as quick as possible, I learned that from Chuck. Lotions, Too Much Palms wants to sell a lotion, it's gonna need to be packaged because it has THC in it, so that's a requirement by state law, so to kind of get past, I mean, I totally understand where some people might be coming from here, is that when you go to a hotel, we don't want it to be a full-size dispensary, and they're walking out with boxes full of their product for the next year until they come back, but if they decide that Too Much Palms has a massage oil, or a lotion, or some sort of product of, you know, that they want to take home, they should be able to purchase that, package that, and take it home, I think that's a better example than consumption such as marijuana cigarettes or, or edibles, so I think that's why we need to keep the packaging in there, sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's all I have, I had one other piece, looking at subsection D number 10, where we're talking about all of the things that a marijuana hotel facility shall, number 10 says, "Employ a person to be on the premises to supervise employees and patrons at all times during business hours," I know a lot of our small spas don't have somebody 24 hours a day sitting there, so I, when we make the motion, I would like to make an amendment that exempts the smaller hotels of less than 10 rooms from that requirement.
Which requirement was that?
D 10, to have somebody on premises 24 hours a day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So, and that's all I've got, so if you're ready to make a motion.
I, I still got two council members.
That's an interesting question, do they have to have security guards as dispensaries do, if they're selling product?
So that, if I may, again, we had a lot of discussion about this, so there was a lot of discussion about making sure that we could balance safety and equitable security across the board for all of our businesses that have cannabis on site, and so there, we did not want to have armed security guards in a peaceful tranquil environment where people are trying to enjoy a vacation, and so that is where, coincidentally, the item that council member Gardner just brought up came into play, and so while it doesn't require security, we do specify in here that they would need to have an employee on site during business hours, so if they have overnight guests, that's business hours, and that would ensure, to be, to ensure that cannabis product that's on site is secured.
Okay, so where a, is it my turn? Okay, so where a dispensary has to go to the expense of having armed guard, which is quite expensive, and work that into their selling prices, a off-site hotel.
It's not an off-site hotel.
I mean, they can have off-site sales, right?
No, they cannot.
No off-site sales whatsoever?
That's correct, no off-site sales.
Okay, well, you answered that question, good job. So on the properly repackage, we're talking about repackaging, not original packaging, so the attorney that was on here said if you get a box of whatever, gummies or whatever it is, and open it up and start using it, what does properly repackage means, I mean, just put the lid back on and carry it out in my pocket?
Yes, it does. So if it's already packaged in a way that the gummy or the mints, or another example that she had utilized, they come with the mints inside of an OPEC package, it would go right back into that OPEC package, and that's how they would leave it.
This leaves the impression with me that this hotel's gonna have to now go through some process of repackaging something for off-site sales, and I think everybody has had that question, has looked at this, or to carry it out, to carry, to carry it off-site, so, so, and does, does it define what proper, is there somewhere in this ordinance where it says, "Hi, properly repackaging," is there, we have a definition of what properly means?
They would need to be familiar with, with state law, so it would refer back to state law, and all of these businesses are, are consistent with that, and our cannabis compliance team would also.
Attorney that was on for the last item didn't say that, that there's any issue with having to repackage anything, it was already packaged once, they opened it up.
Correct.
And they don't need, it's like if you had to pack cigarettes and you unseal it, you don't have to go reseal it to take it out.
The issue comes into play with a cookie or a brownie, is what she was referencing, those, those consumption items that don't come in, you know, a container that you can close back up.
Okay, so my point is, this is gonna lead to confusion, it'd be better if somebody could go in and figure out what repackage means, we've had everybody who has weighed in on this in public testimony has asked for clarification on that, they all read the same words I'm reading here, and if you want to clear it up, fine, not, no big deal, on, "Allow smoking or vaping of any product outside of designated marked smoking areas," we probably need to put something in there that says designated, does it say, does it define designated smoking areas as anywhere that the applicant wants to designate those smoking areas to be within California law, or does it leave it as an open question of where those areas are, because we've had questions on that as well?
So the applicant, and, and, go ahead. So, so the applicant would be able to designate the smoking areas within the facility, so long as those smoking areas do in fact comply with state law.
So can we put that in the ordinance then?
Yes, I did.
Is there any problem writing that into the ordinance? It's not in there now, is it?
Sure, so actually, the, under F, marijuana hotel facilities must comply with all provisions of this code and state law as it pertains to any and all uses at all times, and that would in fact include designated smoking areas.
Okay, so the question here is, you had somebody who said they want to be able to do it by the pool, if state law says, "No, you must be off of a designated smoking area," I remember like when at airports, you had to go, you used to be able to go outside, now you can't even smoke anywhere, so you have to go to some separate designated smoking area, and then go back to the pool, because we had somebody asked in public testimony, is a designated smoking area mean they can smoke by the pool, I think what people want to do is be able to sit there at the pool and smoke.
And they could, if, if the project designates that as a designated smoking area, they could smoke there, what they need to abide by is the distancing from entrance and exit rules that state law has, there's gonna be certain caveats like that, but the project is going to propose their designated smoking areas when they bring their project forward, and so long as it complies with state law, it would be allowed.
Okay, so what I would like to do is just add that language in there as designated by the applicant at the time they submit their application.
You can't do that.
Why not?
You're changing, it, it says state law, what, you're now, now you, what you're
In accordance with state law, but, but, but what's leaving?
I'm not arguing with you, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify.
What I'm not being clear on is that we could sit there and tell them, because this is vague and open-ended.
It's not vague and open-ended, it's very clear to me, I don't know why it's not clear to you, you've asked the same question five different times, five different ways.
No, I haven't.
I'm just saying, yes, in my brain, that's what you've done, which is basically, I mean, it states right there, the smoking area requires state law, whatever the state law says.
I'm asking the side.
Why is it so hard?
I want a definition of what a designated smoking area is.
Anywhere that the state law permits it.
So what's the problem with putting that language in there?
It says it in there, doesn't it?
I, well, I asked where it was, I didn't get an answer.
She just said it like a few minutes ago where it was.
Sure, council member Bets, forgive me, it's on page 28, section G, excuse me, F, excuse me, F, the, kind of up toward the first quarter of the page, F as in frank.
Says marijuana hotel facilities must comply with all provisions of this code and state laws that pertains to any of the issues, uses at all times?
Correct.
Okay, if that clarifies, that's pretty open-ended to me, that's leaving it wide open, so, fine, if it comes back confusion, then I'll have made my point, if it doesn't, everybody's clear on it, that's fine, I'm done.
I mean, if, I'm clear on it, I'm not, I'm just speaking from my point, I'm just speaking from my point, if, three of us are clear.
I just don't see what the, the, the big controversy is, or the difficulty is in adding in, as the applicant designates in the application and in compliance with state law.
Then you give the applicant the power over state law.
No, and in accordance with state law, otherwise, you're, you're leaving it to the point where the staff can determine that, no, we don't want smoking areas here or there, and we can say, no, we don't want them by the pool, I'm trying to protect the applicants, but it's okay, I'm, I'm good.
I just don't know why.
It's too simple of a point, I, I don't try, can't figure out why there's so much disagreement.
All right, any other questions? No, okay, so we'll move on.
Then I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance, adding chapter 17 dot 180, Cannabis Hotels, title 17, with an amendment in subsection D number 10, adding the words that hotels with greater than 10 rooms shall comply with subsection 10.
Is there a second? Motion's been made, I'm waiting for it to come up on the screen, there's a second, and there's more questions?
Just quick discussion, so under that motion then, a marijuana counter with marijuana products can be totally unattended at any time?
If you read the ordinance, it says that the marijuana must be in a secure facility, and the only thing that can be displayed is an empty container.
Okay, but staff was telling you that the reason they had that in there was that they didn't want to leave marijuana unattended with a human body watching the storage area, is that, am I correct, was that what staff said?
Dorian?
So, yes, I did say that, for hotels that are, with respect to council member Gardner's amendment that he is making, yes, for larger facilities, there is concern about having, even though product is stored in a secured location, there is concern, especially for bigger facilities, because generally you have a lobby that folks are walking in and out of, you know, all hours of the night, for these smaller boutique hotels, as council member Gardner has specified, we can condition the project on the back end through the regulatory permit to ensure that if their staff is leaving at 10:00 PM, that the product is stored and secured in a location that does not have access to the guests that are still on site, so it would not be allowed to be in a lobby where guests can walk back and forth, and we could heavily condition the project on the back end with the, within the regulatory permit if council decides to add that amendment.
So is all that additional detail in your motion then?
I don't think it needs to be.
Okay, so then, this, this motion will be contrary to staff recommendation that there'd be some human control over the storage of marijuana.
I believe it's implicit in there that when they, that a boutique hotel of 10 rooms or less, when they came to get their application for a marijuana hotel, the staff would say, "You have to have this secured in X, Y, Z fashion," correct?
The ordinance doesn't say that.
I don't believe it needs to.
So our regulatory permit is our, our permit that handles all of the cannabis compliance and regulatory and security components of cannabis here in the City of Desert Hot Springs, so all of our, our regulatory and security items and conditions are listed there, it's not listed in the original ordinances, it's handled through the conditions of approval, and that's how we facilitate that currently, so again, if, if that is an amendment that is chosen, we could certainly make sure that the security aspect is handled within the regulatory permit side.
Mr. Mayor, that's what the regulatory process is for, for me, as a city manager, to ensure that anything that is not normally within an ordinance which is giving direction, may not specifically, that we can add to it, my last shot to be able to add those items to it, and, and in this case, I could do exactly what council member Bets is suggesting.
But another city manager could come along that doesn't want to do it, and then the council's wishes wouldn't be adhered to, that's all, so I'm saying, if you take care of it now, it's done, it's okay, I got it, I'm, I'm happy, I have total confidence, and the city manager will want to secure this stuff, I got that part.
Okay, any more questions, please vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on one sec, I need to get the vote in.
Motion passes unanimously, this is the first reading of an ordinance of the city council, adding chapter 17.180, Cannabis Hotels of Title 17, zoning of the Desert Hot Springs Municipal Code regarding regulation of cannabis use at hospitality businesses, the ordinance will return for second reading as amended on January 19th.
Thank you, Ms. Pye?
I think we need a break.
Yes, my, my break, and please, it's 8:25, I give you 10 minutes, please use that 10 minutes wisely, I don't want to hear a one-minute call that I need three more minutes to use the restroom, it is 8:25, we'll be back at 8:35. It is eight twenty-five, we'll be back at eight thirty-five. We've got everybody back on the dais, are we still recording? All right, so we can go back to our meeting, call the meeting back to order, we'll move to item number six, which is A B sixteen hundred, annual report, development impact fees and resolution-making findings reaffirming the necessity of certain development impact fees. Mr. Buckham.
Yes, good evening, so before you is the A B sixteen hundred annual report on the collection and disbursements of the developer, development impact fees for the city. The report, this report documents the collection and expenditures of the development impact fees, beginning and ending fund balances for each fund, and the interest accrued during the fiscal year. The city has two, two of these funds, the fire suppression and the aquatic center funds that have unexpended fees that have been collected over, over a five-year period. The reason why these funds haven't been, been expended through these five-year period is that the desired uses of these funds are actually a high cost, such as, you know, building a new fire station, but compared to when, how much the, is collected in fees every year, so. And then also, the streets, traffic signal bridges fund has ended the fiscal year with a negative fund balance, and that's due to unanticipated additional costs for the Palm Drive improvements, so that negative balance will be made up during the current fiscal year, and the current year budget will be adjusted for, right? Currently, this, for this year, we really, we do not have any projects to be for that fund, so we're okay there. And then, so this A B sixteen hundred report has been amended available to the, for public review, and it's also been reviewed and approved by the Desert Valley Builders Association, so staff recommends acceptance and approval of the report after closing the public hearing.
Thank you for your report, we'll entertain questions from the council before I open up the public hearing.
Quick question.
Yes.
So does a project have to be, for diff funds to be set aside in a certain diff category for a certain envisioned purpose, does the council have to take any action to designate that as a desired project, for example, a fire station that we're saving the fire money for? Is it legally required that we have some, council have taken some action towards that project?
So, yeah, so council would actually have taken that action when these diff, these fees were adopted, so that was actually in part of the master facilities plan, and when these development fees were adopted back in two thousand eight. So that was actually built into the plan, the council adopted.
Specifically a fire station?
Actually, yes, so at some, some of the fees are a little more vague, saying some type of equipment for this type of purpose, and then some of the, some of the uses are more specific, such as a, a fire station.
Great, you did your homework, thanks.
Any other questions before I open the public hearing? We'll open the public hearing at this time, we'll take public testimony, do we have any public here, public testimony?
Yes, we do, Kenny Dickerson.
Mr. Dickerson.
Hello, okay. If we go to the agenda item on the report, background, second paragraph, A B sixteen hundred, for the requires that five years following the first deposit into an impact fee account fund, and every fifth year thereafter, the city makes certain findings as to any portion or such account fund which remains unexpended, unspent, and then it goes on to, to talk about the, the findings must, what they must have. Did the city make any findings during the prior five-year anniversaries? And if so, can we make those available to the public? Meaning, that this, this item here is for the last five years, so we're talking about the five years ahead of that one. Next one is, let me see, number four, under fire suppression and response vehicles fund. You've got new developments, in the end of that, it says, it talks about future commercial and residential development because, quote, new developments in that part of the city will need fire suppression facilities near adequately to protect life. And this was, this was determined back in two thousand and eight, is that correct? I would like that, please, verified, and that there haven't been any additional findings since two thousand and eight for this? And if so, can you please disclose those to the public? Then, number five, I want to ask the question, what is the basis for the statement of the, quote, growing population? Which is in the, it's, it's, it's mentioned in the aquatic center fund paragraph and in a number of other areas? Because it, this census between two thousand and eight and two thousand and eighteen demonstrated that there were only fourteen hundred additional permanent residents in the city of Desert Hot Springs during that timeframe, so I'd like to know what the growing population is, where that's coming from, and what that basis is. Number nine. Number ten, what is the date of the general plan that this is, that's referenced in this? Can that please be provided, it's not quoted in this, in this ordinance, and we would like to make sure that it is in there, the date of the general plan? Does it encompass and address cochelon property or any properties that were part of the two thousand and ten annexation? Please disclose that. Next question is... On the details, on the results section of the fire suppression, fire suppression facilities and response vehicles impact fee, it's analysis page, I don't have page numbers on your printed agenda, but this is the, this is the, the one that has the revenues collected from oh five all the way through oh twenty, and then in the bottom of that has a, a, a quote, and it says, five-year spent test was not met in accordance with government code sixty-six oh 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 one. The city makes finding that it plans to design a nine thousand square foot fire station in the easterly part of the city within the next four to ten years. That facility will be necessary to provide adequate response to the residence businesses in the city's general plan. That's the general plan that I'm asking you to refer to? And, and then, please, please give us an answer to what is the result on this result paragraph? What is the factual basis for these statements? Where, where did these statements come from, who, 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 who made them, and what is their factual basis? And then, please verify that the cochelon project will not be subject to aquatics diffs and/or the other mentioned diffs in this plan? That we are not part of this... What do you call it? Agenda item. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, next public speaker.
Catherine Dickerson.
Ms. Dickerson.
Kenny covered all my questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, we'll close, is that all?
Yes.
It's all, public hearing at this time, we'll close the public testimony, and, we'll close the public hearing, and we'll get those questions answered. Did you write those questions down, Mr. Ray?
I, I have most of them, so in regards to the findings, actually, the findings are in the report for every year, so these, especially for the, the fire suppression fund, we have to make those findings in the report for every year, so it's in any previous report. If the previous reports are not available online, they're welcome to, welcome to contact me, and I will, I will forward, I will email the reports to them, but those findings are actually...
Specific question was, who does the findings? Is it your department or Fire Services?
It's the Finance Department, Public Works is a campus citywide, but Finance Department does the finding of anything unspent, any unspent funds over five years, and compared to what they were going to be used for within the capital, or master facilities plan.
And does that include the, the statement in here about the services needed in the east end of the city? Was that a collaboration with our contract with CalFire?
That, I, I am not certain, I will have, I will have to look that up, the statement for the, they are, we have the, that was part of the master facilities plan, that a, that a, a new, a fire station in that portion of the city, we are in need of one. As you can see from what we collect every year, we do not collect enough every year to actually build one in a, a short period of time.
Okay.
As for the general plan being used, since these, these were for, these were collected during the nineteen twenty fiscal year, this was for the previous, under the previous general plan, not the most current one, which was just recently adopted last June. So these would be under the previous, the previous general plan. And then, let's see. Are there any other questions?
There was some specific questions on diff fees being, I don't know if this pertains, and maybe the attorney can answer these questions. One of his questions was, does certain, or, and/or all these diff pertain to any cochelon project this time? I know that we're redoing the nexus in that area, and all diff fees have been returned to that, those, that developer for now, maybe you can specify?
Yeah, so currently, obviously, the city is undergoing our updated development impact fee schedule to include all of the I-ten annexation area. The prior diff fee study that the city did was back in two thousand and eight, and at the time, it was obviously prior to the, the, you know, when the city annexed the area in two thousand and ten. To make a legal determination as to whether or not it does or does not apply to cochelon, and considering the fact that we've been in litigation on similar issues, I'm not going to make that kind of determination from the dais.
And just to reiterate, this item isn't actually applying fees. This is just a findings and reaffirming the necessity of these certain development impact fees. These aren't on how they're actually applied or when they're applied. I mean, I guess I should say this isn't a new nexus study.
Correct, it's not a new study, this is affirming how the fees and the need for the fees and what the fees, what's been collected and what's been used.
So I apologize, Mr. Dickerson, if there's any questions we missed, but please feel free to call our staff, and they'll try to get those questions answered for you. Nothing is changing how we collect or use these fees at this time. The public hearing is closed, I'll open up the council member comments. Mr. Betts?
So just to clarify, this applies to only areas where we've done a nexus, not the annexed areas at this time, correct? Everything we're looking at here is a status quo. It doesn't apply to annexed areas which haven't had a nexus yet. Nexus study, correct?
I think what we're doing here, I mean, we're, we're telling the, the city council what's been used, how much has been used, how much has been earmarked, what we're earmarking, and, and please, Mr. Buckham, you could correct me if I'm wrong, as to the, the new area, excuse me, the, the annexation area that the city annexed in two thousand and ten, we are undergoing a brand-new development impact fee study to include those areas, because it was quite a big area.
I got that, but that wasn't my question. My question is, what we're considering tonight, I viewed as just a routine matter of reaffirming the necessity of certain development impact fees in areas where they already apply, not in areas where there hasn't been a nexus study, which would be the annexed area. We're not talking about the annexed area here, it's just the same status quo as has been since we put these in, was it two thousand and ten when we adopted these? So this would be the same ones that we adopted in two thousand and ten going forward, not in the annexed areas. I just want to, I'm just trying to frame the conversation here.
So this is, these, these fees were adopted two thousand and eight, my understanding is that the annexed area was in two thousand and ten. All the fees are collected within, for development within the city limits, so that would include some in the annexed area as well.
We're collecting these diff fees in the annexed area?
It's, it was considered...
Let's not confuse the situation, our attorney is not comfortable answering that question right now, I don't want to put staff in a position to answer a question that we're not comfortable, Mr. Betts. You understand, and we've made it very clear in your comments and my comments, that we're not collecting fees in the annexed area right now due to litigation and having to redo a nexus. I will say it as a mayor, you'll say it as a council member, I'm not comfortable with our attorney or our staff saying anything further at that point because of possible litigation in the future, but I think we're all very clear on that, and you and I can confirm that, correct?
I just wanted to make sure that that's what we were doing, it's a really simple question. And since, yes, this is all for the status quo, nothing that hasn't had a nexus yet, it's pretty simple.
That makes it simple right there.
That's all I was asking, I was trying to figure out a way to ask these simple questions more simply.
I'll try to help you.
Okay.
I'm not sure I can confuse it just as much as anyone else. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to make a statement, I don't know if you have it there, but can you read the letter from DVBA? If not, I have it.
No, I do not have the final letter.
Okay, thank you for providing the Desert Valley Builders Association with the opportunity to review and comment on the city of Desert Hot Springs, A B one six zero zero, annual report on the development impact fees for the period ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Additionally, we wish to thank you and Finance Director Jeffrey Buckham for your responsive, responsiveness to our questions. Additionally, we wish to thank you and Finance Director Jeffrey Buckham for your responsive, responsiveness to our questions and concerns. The Desert Valley Builders Association is satisfied that the AB one six hundred report is complete and comprehensive, fulfilling the city annual reporting obligations pursuant to the mitigation fee act, Gretchen Gutierrez, Chief Executive Officer.
And the only thing I'd like to add is, Mr. Dickerson, if you're still listening, this is nothing to do with the current nexus study that will be done. When that comes forth, you'll have every opportunity in a public hearing to, to speak to those items. Any other questions or comments? All right, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Wherever my little pen went, here it is.
Mr. Seryan, can we take, uh, the review and acceptance and then the adoption of the resolution all in one? Okay, so the motion is to review and accept and the adoption of the resolution. Is that correct, Mr. Bets?
That's correct. Thank you.
Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. We don't, I, administrative item number seven is, I will be serving as the successor agency now. And this is recognized obligation payment schedule ROPS, 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 twenty-one, uh, through twenty-two for the period of July one, two thousand and twenty-one through, uh, June thirtieth, twenty-two. Mr. Buckham?
Yes, so before you see recognized obligation payment schedule for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two for the successor agency of the former redevelopment agency. Uh, this ROPS is requesting four million, seven hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred forty dollars for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year for, from the redevelopment property tax trust fund, which is funded by the increment, increment property tax. Um, a total of three million, seven hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred twelve dollars would go towards the debt service payments for the two thousand and eight and two, twenty, two thousand and seventeen tax allocation bonds. Five thousand dollars for the bond trustee fees, seven hundred thirty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-eight dollars to payment to the city's housing authority to repay the CRAF loan. And two hundred fifty thousand dollars to the city for administrative fees. Once this is approved by council, the ROPS will go to the county oversight board for approval in January and to be submitted by the, to submit to the state department of finance by February first. Uh, staff recommends adoption of the, of the resolution of the successor agency approving the twenty-one, twenty-two ROPS.
Thank you for the report. Do we have any public comments on this item?
No, we do not.
All right. Go to the council comments. Uh, there's a recommendation for a motion.
I move staff recommendation.
Second.
Any other comments? Please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Move to item negative eight. This is the audit of financial statements for fiscal year two thousand and nineteen, twenty. Mr. Buckham?
Yes, these are the audit financial statements for the city, the Health and Wellness Foundation, and the Housing Compliance Report for the housing, the city's housing authority. Francis Quo with the Poon Group is providing a presentation on the audit and the financials. Francis?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and a member of the city council. Um, it's my pleasure here tonight to present the audit for the city's financial statement for the fiscal year ended June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty. So I'm going to share my screen and then, uh, present the, uh, the presentation. Um, so just let me know when you are able to see the, uh, presentation file.
Who are you? It's up right now? All right, good to go.
Okay, good. So what I will go through tonight is to talk about the scope of work for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty audit and the audit responsibilities, overview of the financial statement, couple key pension information, uh, and the other result. So fiscal, fiscal year two thousand and twenty, we, uh, performed the audit of the city's basic financial statement. The audit of the Desert Hot Springs Health and Wellness Foundation financial statement, uh, performed the housing compliance audit and also performed the agree upon procedure applied to the two thousand and twenty-one appropriation limit. So a couple of responsibilities that I want to talk about, so as management of the city, uh, they are responsible for the financial statement and to present a financial statement in accordance with GAAP, uh, also including adopting sound county policy, having good internal control over financial reporting and compliance. And as part of the audit process, they are also responsible in providing, uh, evidence and supporting documentation to support the disclosure and then also the amount in the financial statement and responsible for the fair presentation of the financial statement, making sure they are free from material misstatement whether due to fraud or error and also to prevent and detect fraud. And as auditor, our responsibility, of course, is to pu- to perform the, the audit in accordance with the professional standard and also the government auditing standard. Uh, make those, uh, required communication with those charter governance. So those communications happen a couple of times during the year. So first time was during the, uh, the planning process, we issued those, a communication letter to the city council. And then during the audit, we also sent a couple inquiry, uh, confirmation letter to the, to the council, uh, regarding, uh, your knowledge of our related party transaction or any of fraud inquiry. And, uh, we are also responsible to assess the risk of material misstatement, uh, with, whether, over the financial reporting and also, uh, the risk of internal control over compliance. And then, uh, we will determine the fair presentation of the financial statement and then lastly render opinion on the financial statement. So if there's any recommendation that needs to be made, then we will also make a recommendation to management if there's any. So the, uh, the financial statement for the city is actually a hundred and fifty-page report. So, uh, in the next couple of, uh, slides, I size the information of the, uh, the city, uh, for the year and the two thousand and twenty. So in comparison, uh, we're looking at the, uh, governmental activity. Uh, at the end of the two thousand and twenty, the city ended, uh, with a fifty-five million dollars of, um, uh, net position in comparison to forty million for the governmental activity. And a big portion of that fourteen million dollar increase is related to the transfer of capital asset from the Health and Wellness Foundation that was dissolved by the end of the year. So that resulted in about twelve million dollar of increase, uh, to the net position for the governmental activity, uh, in two thousand and twenty. And out of the fifty-five million dollars, about fifty-four millions are invested in the capital asset and not a forty million are the restricted, uh, net position. And, and the resulting of fourteen million, thirteen, fourteen point six million dollars of, uh, unrestricted deficit. And majority of that deficit is, uh, coming from the twelve million dollars of net pension liability that the city will have to pay, um, for the remaining service life of the, uh, city employee and the retired. So here is the summary of the operation for the governmental activity for the year two thousand and twenty in comparison to two thousand and nineteen. So as you can see, uh, the change in net position at the end of the year was a fourteen million dollar increase, uh, for the net position in two thousand and twenty in comparison to four million dollar increase. And of that, uh, twelve million of the fourteen million is related to the transfer of the capital asset from the foundation. And then the, in the middle of the, the table is a general revenue, uh, and of, of the general revenue about, uh, about thirteen millions are, uh, related to the, the tax revenue that the city generate, uh, uh, and recognize during the fiscal year, which are, uh, which are comparable from, uh, from two thousand and nineteen. And this page shows the, um, the net position for the business activity, which is the Health and Wellness Foundation. As I mentioned earlier, because of the dissolution, uh, that's approved prior to end of the year and, uh, the debt forgiveness of the, uh, the, uh, the debt that's issued to, um, to build the, uh, the foundation, uh, uh, building. So that capital asset has already been transferred to the city, which resulted in a zero from, uh, net position at the end of two thousand and twenty in comparison to two thousand and nineteen of seven million dollar for the foundation. And this is, uh, related to the operation. So out of the, uh, program revenue, the five mil, five point six million program revenue, which your, majority of, of it is related to the dissolution and then some of the write-off of the debt. And then the transfer is the transfer of the capital asset to the city's, uh, general fund. So now moving on to the general fund, which is the main operating fund of the city. Uh, when comparing, uh, fiscal year two thousand and twenty, uh, to two thousand and nineteen, uh, combining the general fund and the public safety fund, the city ended the year, uh, with an eleven point eight million dollars of fund balance in comparison to eleven point four million dollars of fund balance. So out of the eleven point eight million dollars of fund balance, uh, for two thousand and twenty, seven point two million, uh, close to seven point three million dollars is committed fund balance, which is the, uh, the fund balance that's being designated and committed by through the council action. So a big portion of it, um, of that, uh, fund balance that's been committed is related to the twenty-five percent set aside related to the marijuana tax revenue that's being put, uh, put aside for any emergency reserve. So that's about two point five million dollar, uh, of, uh, fund balance being committed. And then in addition to that, there's about, uh, three point six million dollar of committed fund balance that's also been committed for, uh, natural or fiscal, in fiscal emergency reserve. That's based on fifteen percent of the general fund budget. In addition, there's another one point two million dollar that's been set aside, um, for capital, for any capital uses. So that made up the seven point three million dollars of the committed fund balance for two thousand and twenty. And the remaining four point four, uh, four point four million dollars of the assigned fund balance are, uh, assigned for next year's, uh, general fund operation. So the city ended the year with, uh, eleven point eight million, which is roughly about four hundred thousand dollar increase compared to two thousand and nineteen. So here's the comparison showing the operation for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty and two thousand and nineteen. So which shows the, the, uh, the revenue for two thousand and twenty with a combined twenty-three million dollars, uh, and minus the expenditure, about twenty-one point seven million dollars, uh, that ended with one point five million dollars of increase of, uh, fund balance. And then there are some transfers that has been made during the year. Uh, some, most of the transfer from general fund were made to the public safety fund to cover, uh, uh, public safety expenditure. So the net transfer for two thousand and twenty under the general fund, it's about one point one million dollar transfers out. So that resulted in, uh, close to four hundred thousand dollar increase in changes, uh, increase in fund balance. So here's the five-year trend information for the general fund, combined general fund, uh, fund balance. As you can see, uh, it went from six point one million, uh, six point two million dollars in two thousand and sixteen, uh, going back up to eleven point eight million in two thousand and twenty. So comparing two thousand and twenty and two thousand and nineteen, that's about three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars of increase in fund balance. Now, moving on to pension, um, so the city participate in CalPERS, uh, pension plans for miscellaneous employee and for the safety employees. Uh, so for the net pension liability comparing, uh, fiscal year two thousand and twenty to two thousand and nineteen, uh, both year were about three million dollars. So you went from three point three million dollars to three point five million dollars of net pension liability with a funding ratio about seventy-three to seventy-four percent. And the contribution that's made during the fiscal year two thousand and twenty was, uh, six hundred twelve thousand dollars compared to, uh, four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars in two thousand and nineteen. And as for the safety plan, uh, the net pension liability for the safety plan, uh, was, uh, eight point eight million dollars for, uh, for the year, uh, two thousand and twenty and eight point three million dollars for two thousand and nineteen with a funding ratio both year, uh, seventy-two percent. And the contribution made during, uh, uh, two thousand and twenty was one million dollars, which is comparable to two thousand and nineteen, uh, nine hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. So with that, bring me to the other results. So for the city's financial statement, uh, we issue a modified opinion, which means the financial statement are fairly presented. And in all, in all material respect, in the accounting policy has been consistently applied. And the, uh, there are a couple of estimate that's been used in the, uh, financial statement, uh, uh, amount. So related to pension liability, uh, in the related to the useful life of the depreciate, depreciable asset. So those estimates are reasonable and also the disclosure are properly reflected in the financial statement. A couple other results, we didn't report any disagreement when management didn't report material weaknesses, uh, internal control over financial reporting. And no accounting issue that's noted and we do, we did report a compliance finding related to the housing successor. Uh, number is the two thousand and twenty dash zero zero one, which you can find out more detail in the report, uh, that's included in the agenda package. So with that, conclude my presentation and I'll be more than happy to answer any question you may have.
Ms. Quo, thank you so much, uh, for the, uh, presentation. Again, it looks like our staff is doing well and Jeffrey, you can keep your job. Um, with that said, I'll open it up to any public comments at this time.
No, we did not.
All right, I'll open up the council comments. Mr. Gardner?
Yeah, I will just going to echo what you said and, and, and thank you, Francis, too, for that great detailed explanation. I love the slides and they're very helpful on that. I, uh, sitting up here as somebody who is, I'm not, you know, responsible for it, but it's part of the decision-making process to get us where we are. Uh, I have to say, I'm exceedingly proud of our staff and of our council here in getting us to this point. To have eleven point eight million dollars in an ending fund balance from the years when you had four hundred dollars in the checking account is an amazing, amazing transformation and I, I want to see us keeping on that track. I, I really very much appreciate the, uh, the, the relative conservative, uh, expenditures that our staff makes and how we keep things on track, how much we use in grant funding, how much we find other sources of income for. And I think that's what got us to this point today. And, uh, I know we're just taking this and receiving it and filing it, but, uh, kudos to our entire finance staff as well as all of our city staff for all of the work they did and for the council over the years for getting us to this point.
Ms. Pye?
I would like to say something that, um, our auditor did not say, which is, it's okay. Um, there were fiscal year twenty, uh, nineteen to two thousand and twenty highlights. And I would just like to mention those. And you were right about what the council has done and what, um, staff has done. And part of that is the city completed construction of the new city hall facility in May, two thousand and twenty, and was occupied by staff in July, two thousand and twenty. The city completed a significant modification to Palm Drive, which include additions of sidewalks, traffic signals, buffer, bicycle lanes, street lights, ADA ramps, flashing beacons for pedestrian safety and rehabilitation of pavement. The city replaced outdated heavy equipment such as front loader, skip loader, boom lift truck, dump, dump truck and water trailer. The obsolete agenda management system was replaced with ICOM compass to improve effectiveness and efficiency and implementation of Netfile Electric Filing System, facilitated the successful business opening of the new constructed twenty, twenty thousand square foot grocery outlet and the renovation of the ninety square foot Kmart into the Royal Emerald Pharmaceutical Medical Research Facility. Implemented a new cloud-based permitting license and code enforcement system as well as replace obsolete phone system with modern VoIP system. The city updated and implemented a citywide general plan. The implement of the working scholars and lead program to enhance the education and leadership development of our employees. The city participated in successfully unwinding the new market tax, tax financing arra- arrangement. which was used to construct the health and wellness center in two thousand and twelve. We across here, we set policy and staff executes the policy. So all of us are to be grateful in this. And you as mayor is our leader. And it has been a pleasure working with you during this time. And there's more. Today I'm talking. Although the city finances have continued to improve, there are still several unfunded needs for the community and the organization. Organization. In recent year, the city has been able to replace some equipment, increase service levels with the use of technology and complete large capital improvement projects. However, more investment in equipment maintenance and capital improvement is still an issue. The city recognized that as more revenue becomes available. The city will allocate funds towards maintenance, capital projects and services levels and continue to work on grant opportunities. Now, it appears that the mayor will be our new mayor as well. And I'm looking forward to that because as I said, we set policy. And even though he's the leader, he has to get the vote. But he set it up for us to do this and we have an awesome staff. Even in face of COVID, we have had an awesome staff. And I look forward to serving my next two years with you.
Thank you, Ms. Pye. Mr. Griffith? Mr. Betts?
Yeah, I want to thank Councilwoman Pye for listing all the things that we've gotten done because sometimes that gets lost at the same time you're looking at the numbers. We've gotten a lot done. And you might say, well, geez, you did all that. What where's your finances going? That's a lot of spending. That's a lot of new. That's a lot of new stuff. And the reality is, is that our finances are good with all of that that we got done. And I met with the auditors, I think as we all did. And I want to thank you for the job you did. We're certainly happy to hear that you didn't find any disagreements with our staff. And Jeffrey, it sounds like you're doing a great job. So thank you for that. It's I, I'm gonna ask you this question. Compared to other cities, you you must look at lots of other cities, not just us. Can you maybe help our public understand where we are in comparison to other cities in California?
Right, so a lot of our clients, depending on where they are at, considering that the city actually has a lot of the transient occupancy tax revenue coming in. It definitely got impacted by COVID nineteen. But overall, the general fund maintained the fund balance and even with some three hundred thousand increase in the general fund, the fund balance. So some of other cities that I, as my my client cities, they are not as fortunate to have that because they really heavily focusing on the hospitality industry. And there's really no other sources of revenue that can cover the the lost revenue. And so that that really create a a significant decrease in their fund balance. And not only just some of the the city that's relying on the hotel revenue, there are also some other city really relying on just, you know, patron that's paying the 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 car revenue or some other sales tax revenue that's been greatly impacted by the COVID nineteen. So for the city of Desherspring, seeing a a increase in the in the fund balance for general fund. So in comparison to a lot of city, the city is actually very fortunate to have that increase in the fund balance.
So we're looking pretty good and to put it succinctly, right?
Correct.
And so and and the 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 committed fund balance, that's another way of saying our reserves are at seven point two nine million, seven point three million, which is good. Fund balance is going up. All this has been stated. So I think it's really, really good. And, you know, those of us have been here for the long haul on this from the really bad times when there's only four hundred and fifty dollars in the bank. And Councilwoman Pye, you're right. Again, we did set in plan in place, you know, a policy that we were gonna correct this. Staff has kept us on that course. Mr. Mayor, you're doing a good job. And I think it's pretty certain he's been reelected. I don't think that one's gonna change. So you're with us for four years. That's good news. So anyhow, the I just, this is, you know, there's a lot of cities out there that wish that we're in the position that we are in. And as long as we keep these same policies going forward and don't slip back into what got us into trouble before, we're okay. There's always that caution. But I I don't think you could ask for a better audit report than what you've given us. And certainly impressed with your firm. You guys are, I I just want to share this. I was talking to her earlier today and I said, she had a presentation and kind of like I like to interrupt sometimes in case she hadn't noticed. And so I'm interrupting her presentation and I say, okay, well, where is, what about this? And she goes, oh, we'll go to page ninety-five. And I said, okay, what about that? She says, oh, go to page thirty. And I said, well, what about, I mean, it's like the command of this detail, this information was just phenomenal. So you did a great job. Thanks for letting me interrupt you so much and get all my questions answered. And anyhow, so the bottom line is we're doing really good and I think everybody up here can feel very proud of that. And thank you, staff, for your work. And the public should know that things are looking good right now. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief, but this is a really important item. We all sit down with Ms. Quo once a year and go through basically what we went through, not all the slides. But she gives a pretty detailed report to each individual council member and then we have to come back up and listen to the report again. But the reason we do that as a council is so that you, the public, I know it doesn't look like anybody's paying attention right now, but this is recorded and will be played again sometime and someone will watch it. Will listen to this and see it or and or it's the proof we have by what we speak as council members each and every day out in public when we pump up what we are doing as policymakers and what our staff is administering for our policies. I'm humbled by what Ms. Pye said. You know, I'm just one council member up here. I know I lead the meetings and I'm the figurehead a lot of times. But there's literally four other councils that have led this direction. It's a mixture of us plus a couple individuals that have left us that helped get us to this point. So kudos to all the council members that have sat up here for the last five years or so and really continued these policies going forward. The staff that sits here today is doing the job that we've asked them to do and you haven't fought us on it. And somehow you've been able to spend millions of dollars and still put millions of dollars into our bank account because you've planned and done it the right way. And Mr. Mayor, so kudos to you and everyone in your staff. If you ever read my emails, people have, I have three kind of heroes that I have taglines from. And I'm, I like history and I love quotes. And I've made these quotes before, but I have three on my my tag of my email. One's from Vin Scully. And everybody knows I'm a huge Dodger fan, so of course I have that on there. I see my Seattle Mariner fan friend down here rolling his eyes. And I have one from Martin Luther King, but the one I love the most is from Ronald Reagan and basically says, surround yourself with the best people you can find, delegate authority and don't interfere as long as the policy you've decided upon is being carried out. And that's what we've done for the last five years. So kudos to everybody. Thank you, Ms. Quo, for hanging out with us tonight. I know it's a long night for you, but I hope we paid you well to do that. And with that said, I think we're gonna let you go. This is a receiving file. There's no other comments. All right. Thank you again for spending the evening with us.
Thank you, too.
Our last item on the agenda is item number nine. It's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Park restrooms, and this is exactly what our Public Works Director Danny Porres was waiting for all night long to talk about bathrooms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Each year, the city receives entitlement allocation from Community Development Block Grant, CDBG funding from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city's two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two CDB allocation is estimated at two hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one, yes, two hundred and ninety-one thousand, sorry about that. Majority of these funds must be spent on capital improvement projects such as housing, public and public facility improvements or eligible public works projects. CDBG activities must meet one of the CDBG national objectives, which include benefiting low-income and moderate-income persons, aiding in the prevention and elimination of slums or blight and meeting having a particular urgency. An effort to utilize CDBG funds with eligible expenses, city staff reviewed the CDBG criterias, reviewed the capital improvement plan and inspected all facilities. Taking these factors into account, staff found one viable project, which is the installation of prefabricated restrooms at two parks, Corporate Yard Park and Tedesco Park. In reviewing the capital improvement plan and future park goals, staff reviewed the current needs for the completion of Corp Yard Park. After council's approval of Corp Yard Park, the city has completed the preliminary design and environmental documents that are scheduled to be certified by the City's Planning Commission next week. The city has also also has a capital improvement project for Phase One of the street improvements for the park scheduled to begin in two thousand and twenty-one. And staff is continuing to work with the city grant writer on applying for construction funds for the entire project. The restroom facility is a key component of the initial construction. With the construction of a restroom facility in place, the remaining park amenities can be constructed in phases if needed. Staff also completed inspection of all city facilities and found a major need of restroom replacement at Tedesco Park. Restrooms are currently operational but continue to have major issues with vandalism, overuse, AD accessibility and failing structure components. Staff looked into options for upgrades, replacements and or replacements and improvements and based on the existing conditions and total cost and ultimate life expectancy of the structure, the race replacement option was determined to be the best value. Staff then reviewed the race replacement options, including design construction and construction of prefabricated restroom structures and determined that prefabricated restroom structures were the most economical and best operational alternative. Prefab restrooms featured unique designs that have been proven to function property within parks. They withstand overuse, they mitigate vandalism and they add security, structural stability and overall cleanliness. In order to continue to move the Corp Yard Park project forward and replace the restrooms at Tedesco Park, staff is recommending that council authorize staff to submit a grant application for CDBG two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two for the purchase of and construction of prefabricated restrooms at the two parks. Attached to the report, we have some park renderings from Corp Yard Park and some sample prefab restroom pictures as well from other parks in California. And there's a CDBD resolution. That concludes my staff report. Glad to answer any questions.
Let me start with public comments real quick. Is there any public comments?
No, there aren't.
All right, Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Porres, excellent. I mean, parks are a key component of what a city's job is. And we are lacking in our parks here in the city. And, you know, now that we've got some good financial sound footing under us, we can start looking at at doing stuff. Corporate Yard Park is going to be a beautiful addition to the city. We can get all of the funding for that. Tedesco Park is, I'm gonna take some ownership. I kind of adopted Tedesco Park. I walk through it two or three times a day. And it's right by my house. I love that park. It's one of the most well-designed and beautiful parks in the city with the exception of the restrooms. And those restrooms are, if if we had to adhere to building codes, we'd be condemned at the moment. There, there's no roof. There's no, it's just, it's just bad. So I was a bit hesitant when I saw this and you said prefab and I'm picturing something completely different. So I don't know if you can put up the slides to show us the the prefabs here. I don't know if if they're in there, they're in our packet, but can you put them on the screen for everybody else to see? Because when you hear prefab, you kind of think tacky. These are not, and I think these will really serve our our purpose well. And, you know, I would eventually like to see us working on some grants to get a dog park up by Rotary Park, a bigger dog park and a few other places here. But those those prefab restrooms are not what you think of when you think prefab. And I am excited about this. I guess my question for you is, we make an application for a CBD grant, CDBG grant. What, do you have, do you have an odds on whether we'll get the grant or not?
So CDBG reviews the application based on location. It has to be in a low-income area within certain range. The actual scope of the project has to be in the different criteria. And we have to be in good standing with all of our previous cycles. So we we should be able to get all both of these for these two parks as long as we meet all those all those requirements. And just to answer your question on prefab two, we took a look at different prehab, prefab restrooms here in the valley. Indio has about two of them. I think Pontefort has two of them as well. And it's not a prefab trailer. It's an actual MORDAR building. They just build it in in a different facility. You put on the slab and then they bring it and build it here. So it is a permanent structure. It is completely built. It's just built in a different facility.
Yeah, and and the pictures clearly showed that. And that was why when I was originally reading your staff report, I thought, oh, no. And then when you start looking at these, you realize that that this really is a a great addition and will be very cost-effective too, as opposed to knocking those down and building an entirely new new structure on that. So, you know, we we we've gone after grants before and had our hearts broken. I'm thinking the park on Palm and Twelfth, was it up there, that we didn't get the grant for. I just, I'm just really hopeful we get this grant and can move forward with it because that, those are very, very needed projects, all I've got.
Anyone else? Yes?
So my understanding is these ones are pretty much automatic. Every year they've come through when we go for the CDBG grant.
Yes, as long as we meet the criterias and we meet all the scope of work, then we 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 should be able to, those, that funding is allocated and 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 held for the city.
So you gave us four of these to look at. This looks like what we saw when we went to that trade show for the league. That's where we found these probably, right?
Yeah, there's, these companies, all they do is just restroom facilities. So that's, it's a hundred percent, that's.
So the council get to vote on which one of these we go with because we've got four pictures here and I see one of them's really ugly. So it's probably just put to make the other ones look better, right?
It'll be the design factor and the cost factor. But yeah, we can bring them back for at least for the architectural features. So there, the structure itself is, it's a one stall, two stalls, and it's a box or it's not a box. And then the exterior gets gets added with different features. So you got pitch roofs, you got different type of architectural features you can choose from, yes.
I'm sure it'll be gray or blue.
So what you're saying is when it comes to the design, you can bring it back and we'll take a look at it?
Yeah, definitely. And and just just the design itself, since all they do is restroom, the design goes in favor of the of the structure itself. So it prevents vandalism from the actual materials they use, from graffiti, from actual breaking in. Some doors are automatic closing too for our park schedules. They even have the blind spots that we currently have for security. And then the ventilation and the cleanliness is also pre-designed into it already, which which we lack of currently.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a motion?
Any other questions?
Please, can you bring out the blue and the gray one for us to take a look at?
Adopted, Mr. Mayor adopted a resolution that City Council authorizing participation in and authorizing city manager to approve all agreements and necessary documents associated with the Community Development Block Block Grant for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two.
There's a motion in a second as soon as they come up on the screen there. Any more discussion? Please vote. We're missing a couple votes.
Mayor Pro Tim Griffiths?
Mayor Pro Tim Griffiths, your vote go through.
Okay, motion passes unanimously.
All right, consent counter was approved in whole. Future agenda items can be discussed with the city manager's office. Is there anybody on the line for public comments?
No.
All right. As stated at the beginning of the meeting, this is the last official meeting of two thousand and twenty. We wish everybody a happy holidays. Unless there's an emergency, we won't be meeting. The elections officials will sometime in the next twelve days approve, or thirteen days, no, ten days approve the election and certify it. And we will have a ceremony January fifth for the newly elected council members and mayor seat. And again, have a safe holiday, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa. What's that? Don't forget our lighting contest is up on the webpage. So if you want to participate on, do some holiday spirit, that's the way we're gonna do it. And we'll have, again, a ceremony on July fifth for the new council members and outgoing council members. Staff be safe. Happy holidays. Happy New Year.